I'd like to call a word of the Macedonia Planning Commission Public Hearing for March 17th, 2025. Could we get a roll call?
Mr. Westbrook's?
Here.
Mr. Wallenhurst?
Here.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Ms. Muskie?
Here.
All right. The first and only item on the agenda for the public hearing is conditional use approval to operate a business with outdoor storage in an LI Limited Industrial District located at 9270 Valley View Road. Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to speak for or against this item? All right. Well, since we're a couple minutes in, you might as well. Yeah. Anyone make a motion?
We're all in the meeting anyway.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
I'll second it. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to move into the regular meeting, but I want to make sure the first... Is anyone from Omega Painting here? Is that anyone? None of you guys? What about Audio Nova? Is there... You're the one?
Yes.
Maybe it could be a big deal, Brian, if we take something out of order?
You can just amend the agenda to you're going to go right into the meeting from the public hearing where there's no one here for the public hearing. And then resulting, you're going into the regular meeting and adjusting the schedule accordingly to take the second case, third case, fourth case, until the first case comes, and you'll go back to that.
Okay. Does that need to be some sort of official motion? I'd like to make a motion as stated by Mr. Francis.
Okay.
(laughing) Stop repeating all that. Is there a second?
One second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Then I will call a word of the regularly scheduled Macedonia Planning Commission meeting for March 17th. Could we get another roll call?
Sure. Mr. Westbrook's?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mr. Wallenhurst?
Here.
Ms. Muskie?
Here.
All right. First is approval of the February 10th meeting minutes. Anybody have any corrections, additions, deletions?
I'd move we approve that, submit it.
All right. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Then we will start with Agenda Item Number Two, which is Audio Nova, 640 East Aurora Road. Come on up. Let me find my stuff. Yes, yeah, good.
Kathy Clark, Ace Lighting, 1260 One Road, Avon.
All right. Application's pretty straightforward, so unless you want to say anything special, you could jump into Mr. Francis's review and comments on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My report is dated February 28th. Request by Audio Nova for signage for 640 East Aurora Road, excuse me, Unit C. The existing signage is for... It's there currently is for physician hearing centers. And so this is presumably just a new...
Rebranded.
Rebranded, okay. Rebranded, and so they want to get their signage up. This would be two wall signs, some window signage slash door decals. And so in terms of the area of the sign, Section 117903 F2 permits two square feet of sign area for every lineal foot of tenant frontage. Tenant frontage is just about 30 feet, so just under 60 square feet of signage is permissible. The two wall signs in total is about 20, just a little over 21 square feet, so no issue there in terms of the area. Window signage can't exceed 25% of the total glass area, the ground floor windows. Includes the poles, includes white vinyl lettering, green lines on the glass on all three doors. We have the glass area, which is about 16.68 square feet, which would permit about 4.17 square feet of door signage. But we don't have any of those dimensions, so we just need that information. The... So what the decals are, the square footage, and then what the square footage of that green, I think it's a green like dash, presumably as part of just the logo and branding. Just to confirm that it complies with that area limitation of the 4.17 square feet. And then there's several colors for the sign, holly green, lime green, apple green, a lot of green, white and black. Because it is an outlaw, it's not subject to the color scheme of the Commons, but the planning commission can approve that, the colors. Even if it were subject to the Commons, you have the ability to approve colors based on an amendment we did to the Commons sign criteria. So that's just an issue of approving that. So we have the need to know what the dimensions are square footage-wise, and I think you can approve it subject to. You can approve the colors. But the issue that I had that's most sort of, I think, geranium for discussion is that the wall sign itself is being proposed as flat cutout letters on a backer as opposed to raised dimensional lettering, which is what most of the signs in the Commons use, what we've approved recently with all the requests we see, particularly in the Town Center District. So my recommendation would be to use dimensional letters as opposed to that flat cutout lettering on a white backer. And I can answer any questions the commission may have.
Is that something they would be able to do, the dimensional?
Yeah. I think the way they designed it was because the previous one was just flat letters on the building, so I think they just were going with the same look, basically. Dimensional meaning like...
Raised letters.
Raised, okay. But they can just be nonlit and everything?
Yeah. The same way... You could do it the same way, just not putting it on a backer and making them flat.
Oh, you don't want the backer, though?
Unless you absolutely have to have it.
Okay.
I don't know what your, you know, what the money surface is. If you do a backer, you might... I don't know that any of those... Are they on backers, those other ones? I don't feel like they are.
It doesn't appear to be.
Yeah.
I think it's kind of like a white panel that's on the front.
Yeah.
The whole time, yeah.
I feel like Key Bank is attached, and the D.C. Dennis is attached directly, like mounted to it.
Right.
Yeah. That would be my recommendation, just be consistent.
Okay. So we do away with the backer and just do the dimensional letters?
And that's up to the commission, but that would be my recommendation.
And I do not have the sizes of the graphics. I didn't realize they weren't on there, so we'll get that for you.
Yeah. And I'd say that provided you comply with the 25% limitation, the commission could, if they were so inclined, approve it subject to.
Right.
And if you exceeded that, they wouldn't be able to do anything with it anyhow. You'd have to go to the board's own deals.
Okay.
So that way you don't have to come back to the commission if they were amenable to that approach.
Is it 25% for each door?
It's total.
Total 25%.
Do we have any questions or comments?
We approve it subject to administrative approval, that kind of thing.
Yeah. I think, yeah, we could do that for the 25%.
Right.
And then...
The color?
And then also with the raised dimensional letters.
Right.
I think colors, we don't specifically have to mention, is that because of the outlaw? Or should we?
It's... It's... I mean, I would just include it in your approval since it is in the Commons, even though it's exempted from the criteria, and I just there on the side of caution, so at least you recognize that it was...
Okay.
They were approvable colors. Or you can be silent, whatever you prefer.
Okay. I'm fine with the color.
Go ahead.
Okay. Make a motion to approve with changes that dimensional lettering will be provided as requested in Mr. Francis's memo, as well as administrative confirmation of the percentage of cover of the doors. And note that we are... Find the three different types of green acceptable on the sign.
I second that motion.
All right. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, I believe I heard in your motion you would express nonlit dimensional letters.
Yes. Thank you for clarifying my... All right. Is there any more thoughts? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So check, is there any... Is there someone here from Omega Painting? Omega Painting? Is that you guys? All right. We started early, so we, when you were here, we thought we'd come back to you just to keep it moving, get along. Just if you'd like to come on up. Hope we didn't worry you that we just totally blew past you. We just thought...
(laughing)
We just thought, ah, we were done with the public hearing early, so we just wanted to move on. Could we get your names for the record?
Ermianni.
Okay. All right.
John Capitars.
All right. Okay. So would it make some... Well, I guess there's a couple of things. Yeah. Well, I guess the outdoor storage, the site improvements, and the signage at 9270 Valley View Road. Either if you want to give any overview, or we could jump into Mr. Francis's comments on the plan and then discuss it from there. It's up to you if you want to give any kind of, you know, discussion on it to start out.
Yeah.
Sure. Okay.
We're a small business. We do a lot of work for a lot of companies around here, so we have a shop in Cleveland on West 130 in Brook Park on the Cleveland side. And it was time for us to grow a little bit. So I do a lot of work around here, and I saw that building for sale. And I made a deal with the... My realtor made a deal with her realtor, the lady. The owner, the original owner died, so the lady took over, his wife. And we made a deal, and right now we're just fixing it up inside, painting the walls, painting the ceilings, poxing some floors, putting some shelving up, some glass block windows. I added on the side. I got a permit for that. I'd like to extend the parking lot to the front of the building, which the city allows me. And put some kind of solid fencing up there, so we meet city code, you know, in case we do park anything in the parking lot, which I will park stuff in the parking lot, because I bought a small building with a big parking lot to use the parking lot, so, I mean, I'm going to use it, you know? And just want to be, you know, honest. I am going to use the parking lot. So whatever we got up in the front, we will. If we got to invest the money to block it with a brick wall, a nice fencing front, whatever you guys recommend.
Is that with the outdoor storages mainly just vehicles?
Yeah. I got...
But they don't stay all the time. We work. You go to a job...
Right.
The equipment goes with it, you know?
See, I have my...
Sometimes you leave it at the job site. Depends on where it is, because we've been robbed, you know?
I have a very extremely small company. It's me and like three guys. And over the years, I invested a lot of my money into equipment and trucks. And I designed each one of my trucks that this truck is for this kind of job. This truck is for that kind of job. This truck is for that kind of job. And I have a lot of trucks. But they're all five-star trucks, nice-looking, brand-new trucks.
(inaudible).
Yeah.
Nice-looking, brand-new trucks. And this truck might leave tomorrow. That truck might leave Wednesday. This truck might leave Thursday. But... And I'm going to split the trucks up. I'm still going to keep my other shop.
Yeah.
But I'm going to split it up. I'm going to have half of my equipment here and half of my equipment in Cleveland, which, you know, Cleveland's getting so bad right now with the crime, and you call the police and they don't want you to show up. That's another reason why I bought this building, because of that situation.
That's unfortunate, yeah.
They don't show up.
But they know how to collect your property taxes, you know?
(laughing)
So whatever kind of wall we're going to put up in front, I got no problem with that.
Okay.
Solid brick wall in front.
All right. Well, Mr. Francis, if you'd like to go through your comments and your thoughts, then we'd have some more discussion.
Sure. My report is dated February 27th for 9270 Valley View Road. It's a request for a conditional zoning certificate. The property being in the Limited Industrial District, one acre in size, and the request, again, on an application dated February 13th, 2025. So taking a look at the request, the business itself, the office portion of the business is acceptable in the Limited Industrial District. The issue is, within that district, you can't have outdoor storage. So I like to understand, as you described, you said equipment and trucks, a lot of trucks. So if they're, you know, passenger-type vehicles, if they're F-150s, that kind of thing, that's not an issue. But if it's scaffolding and equipment for painting, can you explain what the... What equipment is that would be stored outside?
All of my equipment is... All of my equipment is stored in my trucks, my box trucks, my vans.
Inside.
Any loose stuff, like scaffolding, will be inside the building. Ladders will be inside the building. But basically just trucks and, you know, some small trailers that my trucks pull.
Enclosed trailers or...
There is two there, right there, not... Yes. With spray pumps inside and so forth, painting equipment.
And then you have some non-enclosed trailers, so just like pull behind trailers that... And will things be stored on the trailers as well?
Will things be stored under? No.
No, on, stored on. So what goes on the trailers that aren't enclosed?
Right now I have one trailer there. It's completely empty. There's nothing on it. I use it for heavy stuff. That's basically it. And I barely use it. No, no pressure here.
So what you're testifying to this evening is you don't have any equipment that's going to be stored outside?
Just trucks, yes.
Trucks.
Just trucks, yes.
And enclosed trailers, and one non-enclosed trailer that has nothing on it.
I do have an excavator on site, because I'm... Hopefully I can get the permission by you guys to extend the parking lot to the front of the building, and I was going to use that to do that job.
But that's just a temporary?
Yeah, that's just temporary, sir, yes.
Because the excavator wouldn't be able to stay, not in the zoning district.
I could take that to my Cleveland shop once I'm done.
Yeah. But no other... No, you know, no scaffolding, no, you know, equipment that's...
I have a dumpster out there now for the construction.
Yeah.
Dumpster.
He's very organized.
But there's not like pallets of paint, stuff like that, you know?
But he also...
All my paint I store in Cleveland, first of all. I'll probably get very little paint over here.
I think if you drive by anyways, he can have everything backed in, because he backs everything, because he likes to pull out, you know? So you're probably going to see the front of the vehicle anyways. Am I wrong about that? We can make sure we do it that way, you know?
Passenger-type vehicles aren't an issue.
So what's an issue with box trucks?
Equipment, a storage of equipment, construction stuff, excavators, skid steers, those kinds of things would be an issue?
A box truck?
No, I mean, a box truck is a...
Oh, we're okay then.
And that's like an F-350 or something, right? It's...
Yeah.
Yes, F-350s are smaller.
Yeah.
Couple 2500s.
Yeah. I mean, what you're describing doesn't sound like outdoor storage to me. I envisioned, when I reviewed your request for outdoor storage, and you're a painter, I envisioned scaffolding, things where, you know, pallets of paint, pallets of material, other materials that you would use in your operation.
No, everything's stored in box trucks.
So why... What is your... What is your need then to... I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, if it's okay.
Oh, please, please.
What's your need to have it screened? You said potentially in a solid wall. Why would you need that?
So just from working with the building department and listening, we thought that's what you guys wanted, this. We want... I said, can they just tell us what they want?
So if there's no problem, we're okay, you know? Because that's all we're going to be parking, just pickup trucks and box trucks there, that's it. No kind of loose material, no kind of loose scaffolding. So if we're okay, then we're, you know...
I mean, you're testifying that you're not going to have any storage outside.
No, not at all.
And that's, you know, that's easily discernible. You know, the city uses... They get aerial photographs every four to six months that shows. So when they do like enforcement on property enforcement, they can easily turn to that and say, you're not following the rules that you testified to on March whatever, and so then your permit could be revoked. You're testifying tonight, you're not going to have any of that.
No. Just when I paint the building on the outside.
Sure, but that's temporary, right?
That's temporary, yes.
Yeah.
Just want to make sure we're on the right page here. We saw that, you know, you have some aerial trucks out there, some items there that really do not belong there, that's why you're here now.
Okay.
If you testify that all those aerial trucks, whatever, scaffolding, whatever, if they're going to be done, we're going to be okay. If not, we're going to have an issue afterwards.
I have one aerial lift there behind the building. It's behind the building.
But we're going to use it to paint.
But we're going to use it to paint the building as soon as the weather breaks.
And does that go back to Cleveland?
That'll go back to Cleveland, yes, yes. I have one there, Mr. Nino.
Because obviously your permit and approval from this commission would be tied to your testimony that you're making tonight.
We want to abide by every city rule. We bought this building for life, and we want to make it look beautiful. And we're very grateful that we have a chance to grow in the city of Macedonia, and we want to give you the most beautiful building on the street, you know? I'm a little bit anal, so I'm going to really make it look nice.
Okay.
Really make it look nice.
And the, you know, I know the mayor and council are extremely supportive of small businesses, and they want to see businesses located in Macedonia. Frankly, we like your income tax, but...
We pay it for the time.
That's right. But at the same time, there's rules, and they, you know, we have to follow those rules. And the concern is, the building commissioner said this evening, there were some things already kind of out there that was leaning toward this direction. The issue is, you can't have those in this zoning district. I know you said, you know, you bought the property, use it, you're going to park in the parking lot. There's no issue with parking, you know, your vehicles in the parking lot. It's construction equipment, it's the aerials, it's the...
Scaffolding.
The scaffolding, the excavator, that kind of stuff, you can't do here. So you're testifying, you can leave that in Cleveland, and you're just parking box trucks and other, you know, things like F-150, F-250, commercial-type business trucks, and there's no outdoor storage beyond just that, what you're saying?
Yes. Once I get the patching of the roof done, because it's got some leaks, and the outside painting of the building done, and again my excavating done, any equipment will be taken back to Cleveland. The only thing I'll be having at that lot is pickup trucks, 350s, 2500s, 150s, 1500s. All the excavator will go back, the aerial lift will go back.
Good. And so you're acknowledging whether a conditional zoning certificate is appropriate or not, you're acknowledging that your testimony is limited to what you just described. It's excluding the things that we already talked about, and your occupancy permit from the building department would be contingent upon that. Do you agree with that?
Yes.
How many trucks do you think you're going to have at the most?
At the most, Mr. Nino, five, six.
Okay.
Five, six. It's all going to be backed up in the back. And again, I could put a solid fence in front to make you guys happy.
Yeah, I don't think, you know, from my perspective, when I see solid fences, people are hiding stuff. So I don't think there's a need to do a solid fence. This commission can opine on that, but... And then the police tend to get a little testy with solid fences, too, because they can't see what's going on back there, and they don't want to walk into something that could be potentially...
Sure.
So you don't like the weave stuff either?
No.
My recommendation, and I'm sure you got a copy of the report, is that you not use that. We've... This commission has not allowed that in the past, that texture...
But we'll stick to chain link. We'll stick to that, chain link?
You can do that. I, you know, it's... I would recommend some type of a, like a black powder painted fence, a little more decorative.
Okay.
Or maybe a board-on-board fence.
Board-on-board.
Yeah. Setbacks you have to adhere to, but the commission...
Just in the one side wall that all those electrical towers are at, I would like to go possibly like a solid fence, because of the, you know, the negativity that electrical stuff gives out, and plus it's a little bit of an eyesore.
So...
Right here?
You're confused. So you want to... You have a gate on your driveway, right?
Yeah. So right now, the red line is the yard that's fenced in already with chain link.
Yeah.
So he was going... Would like to bring that forward more.
To the front of the building?
With that gate there. And what he's talking about, the solid fence is on the left side where the long wall is? Just that part right there.
Oh.
Just that corner.
I was able to be outside... I was able to be outside at the time that the... They were doing some electrical work to the towers, and I asked the electrician, you know, what kind of effect does that give out? He said it's kind of, you know, it's kind of, it's not good for your health.
Oh.
Yeah. And I think maybe I could put a solid fence right there just to hide it a little bit.
I don't know how many feet that is.
It's probably around 25, 30 feet.
Yeah. I would not recommend sheet metal, for sure.
Okay.
You know, and you have... There are setbacks you have to maintain. I... Without diving into the code, but the building department can help you with that, but some... If you're...
Is sheet metal not permitted?
Yeah, that would be...
It's not permitted?
I would not recommend that under the power line.
Even for a commercial lot, it's not permitted?
Yeah. And then just from a design standpoint, the city won't allow that either.
That's an area that nobody sees, really. It's vacant on that side, and nobody really sees it.
Yeah, I understand.
So it's not permitted at all on that side?
I would not recommend... No, I don't believe it is. And so in my report, I've stated that the sheet metal would be inappropriate here.
What's the height on the fences, sir?
I don't know. I mean, it's in the zoning code, I would have to spend... I, I don't know, I mean, I, it's in the zoning code, I would have to spend.
Six feet?
Six or eight, something.
But when, when he does that, he'll talk to you and he has to get a permit for that anyway, so, okay.
Yeah, so I would, it, it just, without, I don't wanna err in, in, um, interpreting the code at this point until I, till I saw like a site plan, what exactly you're wanting to do and then just, you know, maybe some images of what you're proposing. But that's something the building department could help you with and they could certainly ask me if they wanted to.
Another thing, Mr. Francis, I wanna, uh, bring it to your, to your attention, is I'll be doing all this work myself. So, I'll be doing it in between jobs, you know, um, couple days here, a couple days there. And it'll be a, a little bit of a slower process, so.
Well, what's slow? Are you suggesting it's gonna take four years?
I'm thinking, no, I'm thinking it's gonna take me, I'm thinking it's gonna take me a good year to get everything to where I want to, a good year.
Probably before the end of, end of this year.
And it all, it all depends on weather too.
Yeah.
If I get some good weather, I could finish quicker.
That, I mean, it presents some challenges, you know, insofar as the storage of some of those items that we talked about that were gonna be temporary. So, yeah, I didn't, I didn't realize it was a, a longer process for you to do.
What's, what's like the limit the city allows you to?
Well, there's not necessarily a limit, it's, you know, we don't, we don't allow outdoor storage. If it's active construction, it's, it's kind of becomes what's reasonable.
Okay, so, um, my aerial lift is behind the building, you can't see it. So what I'll do tomorrow is move the excavator behind the building also. So you won't get to see it.
That was my question for you. If he puts it behind the building and you can't see it from the street, what's the problem?
It's just not an allowable use in that district. We don't allow outdoor storage in that district. We have districts which are, it's the general industrial district.
Even though no one can see it.
Yep, even though no one can see it.
I'll move it behind the building till I start the construction and get everything done. And once everything's done, I'll move it to Cleveland.
Yeah, I mean, it definitely would have to go away, for sure. The question is, you know.
But till then, till then, I'll move it behind the building.
Yeah, I mean, a year is probably not a, that's a, that's a, you know, it's a long time. There's no, the, the issue is, within the zoning code, there's no temporary mechanism to allow it. If it's active construction and it's three, four, five months, whatever, but it sounds like it's gonna be active construction, but for maybe a year or potentially longer.
No, it won't be done definitely within one year, definitely within one year. I would've got a lot more work done this winter, but we had kind of a harsh winter. So I was stuck inside a lot, so.
What's the purpose of the aerial lift?
Paint quick.
Yeah, so how tall is the building?
How tall is the building? Some areas thirty feet, some areas ten feet.
So the areas that are thirty feet is where you do the aerial lift?
And the roof.
And the roof, get up and, up and down the roof, quick, you know? Most of it's fifty-three years old, so aerial lift's help an old man, you know?
Yeah.
Going up and down ladders.
But you're going up to the roof for the purpose of repairing the roof?
It's got a couple leaks, yeah.
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 So it's conceivable that the work that you do, um, to bring your building to a state in which you start operating out of it, it's conceivable that you do that work first and then you do the other work. So you could expedite the equipment that's not supposed to be there long-term to get that out of there faster.
So do the excavating first, get that out of there? Okay, I understand.
And then push those materials out of there faster?
Yeah, we can, you know, those equipment in Cleveland, just bring in, just when he needs the work.
And that's, you know, when you go to actually do the work, then you bring that equipment in. I mean, there's some mobilization, but.
I could actually, the excavator, I could actually put inside the building. I think it'd fit inside the building.
Problem unsolved.
Problem unsolved, okay.
So then you're just at the aerial lift?
The aerial lift is behind the building.
Again, mine doesn't matter, it's just not, it's not a use, it's allowed. So if you're using aerial lift because you're up and down repairing the roof, you're painting up in that, those tough to get to spots, no problem. But if it's just there because you're hiding behind, behind the building.
No, we're not hiding.
As soon as I finish, as soon as, I'll put the excavator inside and as soon as I'm done with the roof, I'll take the excavator out of there. The boom. I mean, the aerial lift, the boom.
Oh, it is, okay. Yeah, so, uh, I think what the building commissioner is, um, which is a very reasonable approach, just saying, just tie it to the, the permit, which is a six-month permit. So you have six months to do that work associated with those pieces of equipment, provided the commission agrees. Um, and that's something that, it's just easy to track that way.
So get an excavating permit and a roof permit for six months?
I don't, if you're just making repairs on the roof, you really don't need a permit.
I don't need a permit, okay.
Okay, so if you are redoing the roof now, you need a permit?
Not redoing.
No, we, you know, we can have a, I mean, this, this is not a talk for the commission. It is, um, as far as permit, you can give me a call and we can talk about it anytime.
He'll tell you which ones to get, when you need to get them.
So it sounds like the use is kind of, it's become a non-issue anymore. So it, it, it sounds like they can, there's some things you can work with the building department to get that taken care of. So it doesn't sound like that's an issue. So I don't know if we're just left with the sign and.
We're on item number two of my report now.
Yeah, all the way to two.
Yeah, so we got item number one out, so that's good. Um, you, you have the issue, uh, so you're proposing to re- add additional hard surface, but because it's a hand-drawn sketch, it's not to scale. So typically what happens is when you come to a planning commission, they require things be done by a design professional. I don't know how big of an area this is, just because there's no scale to it. Um, and that's something I'm sure the city engineer, he's shaking, said, yes, we need to know that information. Because it looks like it's a small area, but we just don't know. That information's gonna be necessary to understand how much hard surface you're adding to the site.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, um, if you could, I'll be honest with you, in my initial, uh, look at the documents drawing there, I didn't even recognize that there was, uh, additional asphalt or additional parking lot being constructed as part of this. Susan alerted it to me later, otherwise I might've provided some comment on that. But if you could, you know, in your resumé here, whatever information you bring back to the building department for your permitting, provide us some dimensions on there, how you're gonna build that asphalt section, uh, how thick it is, what kind of material you're gonna use. Uh, it might need to be curved, I, I, I don't know, uh, or parking bumpers or something, uh, so. Provide us all that information.
Mr. Quigleyody.
Yeah.
The asphalt part of it, I will be submitting that out to an asphalt company.
Have them, yes, have them provide a sketch and the full detail, that'd be perfect.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's good that you're doing that, because they're, they're used to providing that information to cities, yeah.
Yeah, they're constantly pulling a permit.
Just the excav- excavating part on my end, I will do it to save money.
Sure. So that's just needs to be attached as a stipulation if the commission's going to approve. Um, then we talked about the, uh, the chain link and the solid metal fencing. I think we just need to talk through what, um, with the commission, how they feel about that. And then, uh, I just raised the question about the septic tank. Is this building connected to a septic tank?
Yes, 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 yes.
There is no public gravity sewer on this portion of Alley View Road, so they have no choice.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which I will get it serviced here this upcoming season. I'll get it serviced and looked at and, uh, these.
Yeah, Alley View's like that a lot of times.
It's got, it's got an ugly cover on it right now, I'm gonna change the cover, maybe make it like aluminum or something.
Paint it.
It's ugly, it's ugly one.
Yeah, and that was all the comments I had. So I just, you know, we sort of hammered out the use issue. I know, um, being in a similar role to Mr. Monaco, it's, we just have to make sure from the city standpoint that you understand that you can't store things outside. All those materials we talked about are similar materials. Those trucks, no problem, um, but the aerial lift, the excavator and then other construction type materials or painting materials, that presents a challenge for the city. So while we want the businesses to come here, sometimes it's more difficult when it's in adversarial position and we have to take, um, businesses to court. We spend a lot of money on doing so with tax dollars and sometimes that becomes a negative effect to the community. So that's what I'm sure he's thinking, he doesn't wanna have to go down that road, so.
And I don't wanna go down that road either.
Yeah, your testimony here is, you're not going to do that.
No, the excavator will be moved tomorrow. The aerial lift will be moved as soon as I'm done with the roof. Matter of fact, when I paint the outside of the building, I'll do it with, um, with ladders. To make, to not have to bring a, not, to not have to bring a boom there again. It's not too hot, I can do it with ladders.
And Mr. Sheriff, I today just need to talk through this other couple of issues that the commission should talk through.
Yeah, so on the fence, um, yeah, I think the city's not requiring any kind of, you know, fence that's screened, so. It's only, you know, only, the fence is only if you want to do additional fence. So I don't know if that's, you know, I know you showed on the plan, uh, but you wanted to have that, that additional pavement enclosed, right? That was your preference?
I just want, yeah, yeah, it's, I just want the extra, extra parking lot, I guess.
Okay.
Cause a lot of times I, I, I come in and I turn around and then I back it up to the rear of the fence. The extra front, front edge will help me turn around.
And Mr. Francis, what were you suggesting for the, for the fence instead of, you know, what they were proposing?
Um, well, there's two issues, right? So you have the fence along the front of the building, which, um, I, I don't think there's an issue with, uh, you know, if you did some sort of a, you know, powder coated black or something, it's a little more decorative. Um, you could certainly do board on board, but not a solid fence. If that back corner, the issue it sounds like has to do with whatever that electrical rate, emitting electrical energy or something to you or wanting to do.
It's not many, it's pretty big.
Yeah, you wanted to do a solid fence in that section, um.
Just in that set, that little run right there, it's like twenty, twenty-five feet.
You could do it in wood.
Or some sort of a vinyl, if you wanted to do that, less maintenance. Although you paint, so maybe painting is not an issue.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll work with Mr. Nino and we'll agree to something, we'll agree on something.
And the, the, uh, basically, we, we addressed the septic tank. And then the parking, it's something that you're trying to get that additional parking, what is that for?
Um, like I just mentioned to Mr. West, Westbrook, when I pull in and I turn around and back up, I need that extra space and it's, it's allowed by the city, so why not?
Well, that's fine, I, it just, again, I don't, I don't have a sense of the, the, the depth. What you're saying makes sense, that you might need that additional for turning purposes? But I don't, I don't know, cause it's not the scale, so I don't know what the depth is.
Okay, we can get that for you.
Yeah, that, well, you're gonna have to add that, for sure.
Before he does the asphalt, yeah.
You're, you, my recommendation is anything this commission does tonight, they stipulate things, one of which is to provide a site plan that's to scale, that we can understand dimensions and such.
I wrote down for the asphalt.
Oh, for the whole thing. You have to have dimensions on like your fencing, what, how much fencing you're putting in, what's the, we sort of opine that maybe it's like thirty-five feet where that section is that you wanna do it solid. We'd need deep, actual dimensions.
Yeah, it's probably like, like twenty feet by thirty-five feet, twenty feet by forty feet.
Yeah.
So, so draw it out with sizes and exactly what it's going to look like.
Yeah, and you could provide, you know, you could provide images of that. I mean, you know, there's a number of things that we're talking through. The, the issue is, um, you know, this is a, it's fairly rudimentary, I understand, he did it by hand. Um, so that makes it difficult for us to evaluate. It makes it difficult, frankly, and don't take this the wrong way, to lock you down on your permit. And that's, that's part of this commission's job, because then, not that you're gonna do it, but there are plenty of people that turn a blind eye. They say one thing and they do another. And then this poor guy has to go enforce that and in court. And if there's not documentation of what's been approved exactly and plans to turn to with dimensions and things, it makes his job that much harder and then the law director's job and it gets expensive.
So what we're trying to do here today is get an idea of what you guys want. That's helping us, you know, we don't, this is not, he's a painter, you know, I sell, I'm a salesman, saleswoman or whatever. So this is why we're doing this here now, so we understand that and you understand that.
That's perfect, so with, with that, it sounds like, you know, there's not necessarily an expectation of you walking out tonight with a full approval. So what I would suggest is, is the commission provide what you just asked for. And then, um, you, you come back to the next meeting with that plan and we're ready to approve it, cause you now know.
That's the other thing, like, don't, don't we do that when he's close to doing something? Like the asphalt, I don't see you doing that within the next six months.
No, we'll probably, the asphalt's gonna be done right away, I mean.
Okay, my bad, then we gotta come back next time.
My, my next step is to finish, I'm, I'm real close to finishing the inside. My next step is the roof. My next step after that is the, the, the extension of the, of the parking lot.
Okay, so yeah, it sounds like you want.
Midsummer, midsummer.
Yeah, then you're gonna wanna bring back your plan with some of these dimensions and things and, um.
A lot more, a lot, a lot more specified plan. Dimensions, thickness, the asphalt company that I'm, that I'm gonna be going through.
Those are all great.
And he might even help me out in a manner.
They probably will. The other thing that would be super helpful, if you wrote a, a business summary, essentially just write up what you're proposing. It would be helpful to submit with your application.
A business summary.
So basically, I'm operating a painting business, okay, that's easy. Um, as discussed in the planning commission meeting dated blank, we, what we're gonna have outside is this. And document what you're gonna, what you're gonna put outside, the type of fence you wanna use.
Chain link, chain link, we'll just stick with chain link.
Yeah, the, all of that stuff, put that in writing.
Except that one side.
Yep, and then determine what that one side would be.
Okay.
And this commission can provide you some details on the chain link, on the fencing on that one side, the solid fencing, what they may like to see as it relates to that.
Well, Kevin, when they come back, I should, they also wanna get, bring the signage, uh, the, the detail on the signage or maybe a signage person to, because we don't really know what the sign's gonna look like. Usually I have a picture, you know?
Yeah, so we don't, um, we didn't know what you guys wanted, so we drove around and looked at signs in Macedonia. We saw there were a lot of stone signs with stuff inside.
Yeah.
So this is a sign he actually did do for someone and I happened to have a photo of it. So I was like, um, do you wanna make a sign like this or not? There's also, did you see the existing sign?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, something like this is, I think, good and we'll get into that probably in a, in a minute here.
Oh, sorry.
No, it's okay, that's fine. But I think, yeah, so I think, you know, what, what Mr. Francis, some, some kind of little summary of what, what, what's all going on. You know, I think that would, like he said, and then, yeah, some kind of scaled plan that shows the dimensions, you know, the fence, the parking lot, all those things, um, materials. In terms of the fence, I don't know if the commission, if you guys have any, any preferences on anything, but I would think maybe, maybe that, at least maybe the front stretch is something a little more decorative that you, as he was suggesting, maybe instead of the, the chain link and then, you know, whatever you wanna propose for the connections in the last corner. Um, maybe work through that with the building department, see what they would allow. But I think just from an appearance thing, you know, just what you kind of see up front is maybe, I don't think, know that you have to redo the whole stretch if you weren't planning on doing that.
Yeah, that's, it's okay with us to go a little bit more decorative in front?
They mentioned, um, pines in front of the proposed new fence, some type of landscaping, that couldn't hurt.
Yeah.
And something that's not like that, so when the grass is tall, you can't see it.
You don't see it, but.
I mean, you don't have to put in eight-foot trees, that's not what we're saying, but something that's maybe.
But he wanted to use green giants, cause they're not messy, deer's home, you know?
They'll get, those'll get huge, um, but, I mean, no, I mean.
Too big? Cause arbor vine, I can't go there and water twice a day, that won't make it.
Oh, so you, okay, so you said green giant to me as a species of ar- um, or a cultivar of arbor vine, are you talking about?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay, I'm sorry, I was trying to understand, cause you, you said pines in your.
Oh, did I?
But I don't know.
Green giant.
Green giants are, are usually in arbor vine, yeah, so, but those do get, those do get rather large, but it is a good, uh, selection for avoiding, for deer resistance. But yeah, they're gonna get really large and tall.
We could do privet.
Yeah, that would work too.
Privet hedge?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that would probably do well there.
So I think, uh, uh, bringing back those, those, those items and some detail would, would go a long way. You could probably run some of this through, through the building department, you know, if you wanted to get some feedback initially before it comes.
We'll be, we'll have a better, better plans and we'll be a lot more clear on our dimensions and measurements and so forth. Uh, my wife did this real quick.
Yeah, they got the.
And now she knows what she needs. And, um, again, we wanna make the building extremely beautiful. And, uh, we want city Macedonia to be part of the, of the property.
That's, that's, we appreciate that, yeah. Um, Mr. Francis, do you wanna talk about the sign? You had comments on that as well?
You can, um, if you wanna, if you, you're gonna have to take separate actions on both, they're separate.
Okay.
Items, so it's entirely up to you. Might be good just to, let's take a step of action here on this, give them direction.
Okay.
Uh, with what we talked about and then we can discuss the sign.
All right, so for the, the site improvements, uh, make a motion to continue this to, uh, I guess, what is the deadline for the next meeting? Because it may be too quickly.
I don't know when the meeting is.
It's March twenty-eighth.
So we got a little bit of, you got eleven days till the, till the deadline to get something in for the next meeting, which is.
April eleventh, twenty-first.
April twenty-first.
So, so the next.
We certainly could. Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, well, I'll make a motion to continue the, the site, uh, improvement item to the, uh, May meeting.
Okay, which is what day?
May nineteenth. So you have the deadline to submit for that meeting is April twenty-fifth.
Uh-huh, okay, May, it's a Friday? Uh, no.
I don't know. The, the meeting would be on a Monday.
Oh, May nineteenth.
April twenty-fifth is a Friday, yeah. And the meeting is May nineteenth, which is the third Monday.
Is there a second on the motion for the continuation?
I'll, I'll second it.
All right. Uh, any more discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so then for the sign, Mr. Francis.
Uh, let me look back. Uh, the deadline submit, to submit is April twenty-fifth and the meeting is May nineteenth.
There's a calendar attached to the planning commission application that you made.
It looks like this.
Oh, yeah, okay.
All right, Mr. Francis, would you like to go over your comments on the, on the sign?
Uh, yes, so, um, you can have a freestanding sign up to forty square feet. Uh, the issue is similar to the last discussion we had. We need details. I, my gut feeling is the commission's gonna probably say, you know, that's not bad looking with the picture of what you showed. It just lacks details. So, um, this is, and I'm not saying you have to use this company, but Mr. Westbrook, can you just share, share that with them? That was our first applicant. You, um, you missed that discussion, but that's the type of what the commission's typically expected to get when sign applications come.
Got to tell some logo, dimensions, you know, what the sign is gonna say.
Materials, colors, all that.
You go to a sign company and they can, yeah, put this whole package together for you.
I was gonna do a sign myself.
So, you don't, they don't have to build the sign for you, sign company. They can, they can, they're gonna charge you a fee, but they can put together your submittal and actually articulate what, you'll tell them what you want, they'll articulate it on the paper. That'll come here with the.
How much that costs, sir?
I don't. Yeah, it'd be more for them to build it, for sure.
That, that's the name of the company?
This is just an application that, that somebody had, you know, the, the person that was up here before this. They used Joan's sign, but I mean, there's lots of sign companies out there. There's ones in town even.
So let's, yeah, we can do that.
Yeah, there's a lot. There's Sinaramas in town, Becker Signs is right up the road and they, they do this. They'll, they, like, most of them price it, it's like a tiered approach, right? So they'll draw it up for you based on what you want. They'll draw it up and present it for another fee. And then they'll build it for another fee. So, you know, typically they kinda tiered their approach. If you just wanted to, you wanna articulate what you want, they'll put it onto a drawing, that's, that's a price. And then you can handle it from there, the approval process.
So, um, about the sign, because you got the colors and all that stuff. So are you okay with this, this kind of brick? Is there certain dimensions that the brick has to have? And then the logo he has is a, a paint roller, which is red. And then inside that, say Omega Painting, kind of what I drew there.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't know how much white and red and whatever, you know, you guys. Yeah, but we can have that. That's made of steel. So there's two pieces, it's an overlay. So he'll put a white piece in the middle, then he'll take the, what you see here as blue and he'll put that on both sides around it.
Which would be red, which would be like a safety red.
Sounds nice.
So we can have that drawn and all that, but I, I wanna see if, are you okay with that?
Yeah, and I think, you know, there, we're, we're more picky on, on colors of things in the sign when it's in a, you know, the, the, a shopping center that already has a, has approved plan of signage. This is isolated, so there's a little more freedom in terms of that kinda stuff. Um, that, the, the, the brick block that they used on that sign is, seems pretty nice, or you used, I guess, if you built that thing.
Yeah, you built it from scratch, yes.
I mean, I don't know if you guys, looking at that, I mean, it seems like a very, you know, so it's substantial. It, it, it looks good.
Yours would probably be straight, or are you gonna curve it?
I'm gonna curve it to the same way.
So this area here is the four by ten, four by ten?
I believe so. Let me confirm. Discussing something over there, but, uh, I, I, I think that's where they, they measure that, that area is the sign area. That's the limited. Yes.
Okay.
There is height limitations, but I don't think you're gonna be in that vicinity, just kinda looking at that. I mean, I'm guessing that's like four or five feet high.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you stay below six feet, you'll be fine.
And then the, the, the limited area is just the sign itself, it's not the.
In the way the code reads, um, let me just pull it up for you real quick. Uh, so the sign area shall include the entire face of the sign. Sign area shall not include the frame and structural support unless such structural support is determined to constitute an integral part of the sign design. So typically it's not included, but there's some rare instances where it's, it's integral with and part of and it would be counted against you. But, um, what you're proposing, I would just, if that were the sign and it had your logo on it right now and that's what came to me, I would count that whole blue area, that's your sign. And then the rest is just your surround and it's not counted against you in terms of your sign area.
Okay.
Yeah. And then if you're, I don't know if you wanna light the sign at all or.
There's already lights there, so, uh, one facing on both sides, so I'll just use those existing lights.
So you'd wanna take a picture of those existing lights and submit it with your application, so we understand what they are?
There's just two little lights that come up, about ten inches, floodlights.
Like landscape type lights?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
The previous owner had.
Probably fine, yeah, it's probably just fine. Which is, the, the commission wants to make sure that the light isn't shining away from the sign and shining out into the road. They wanna understand, make sure, if it's just a landscape light, it's probably just fine. Just take a picture of it and submit with your application.
Okay. I think they come out, they come on at, uh, dark?
Yeah.
Sunset and sunrise.
Yeah, so they're, you'd like a landscape type light.
Kevin, it might, you might, you're trying to do some of this yourself. The, the, our code is eleven seventy-nine, he was, he was quoting from it. So it's online, the Macedonia code, and you can read up on all the sign stuff yourself.
Yeah, I was worried about the red.
Well, I, I, you know, I, as he said, the colors don't mean too much, except in a shopping center. But, uh, you, you can do a little of this yourself, reading up online, because the code, you know, Macedonia code for building and everything else, there's a whole sign section.
Yeah, I tried to read it.
Oh, okay. You've been there, all right.
Yeah, it's, this, I figured we'd come today and make some progress and we did.
Yeah, that's good. Yeah, we keep them super complicated, that way I get paid. So.
He said the quiet part out loud.
We've been getting everything, we, we understand now what you want, Mr. Francis. We're gonna get, we're gonna get the, uh, the, uh, everything more clear, clearer on the measurements and so forth on everything and.
Perfect.
We definitely understand now and, um.
And I, you know, you, as Mr. Westbrook said, there's plenty of sign companies. I was just showing you just for the sake of that's what like a submittal looks like. But there's any of Sinaramas here in town, again, Becker Signs is right up the road. They're kind of smaller mom and pop shops, that's probably what you wanna get, somebody that can draw this thing up and, and then you can handle coming and getting it approved here. Don't, don't pay somebody to, to do that. It's not a complicated sign. We just need more details.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions or comments from the commission? Um, I'll make a motion to continue this to the May meeting as well, for more detailed plan.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, I think we've made some progress, hopefully, uh, helped you out.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Kane, I have to say that I was in your building twice, you did a beautiful job on the inside. And the, the outside is gonna look just as nice as the inside. I think the city will have something to be proud of.
It's gonna look better, it's gonna look better.
You'll like it.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. All right, uh, up next is, uh, sign and lighting, uh, Greinger, eighty-two eleven Bavaria Road. Welcome.
Hello. Oh, okay.
All right. Nobody wants to be here with us tonight.
I just don't like driving.
Can we get, uh, names just for the record, for, for Susan?
Yeah.
Michelle James.
Okay.
Mike Longo.
Okay. All right. Um, I don't know if you wanna give any explanation or if we wanna jump into, Mr. Francis, thoughts on your submittal?
Let's jump into the.
All right.
Sure, my report dated February twenty-seventh and do you have, did you, you have a copy of that?
Yes.
Okay, so you, you've read that?
Yes.
Um, so for the commission and the audience's sake, essentially the proposal is to eliminate the two existing ground monument signs at the property, eighty-two eleven Bavaria Road, and eventually replace them with two new ground signs. I say eventually because there's an interim period in which two temporary signs are being proposed. Um, and then the new signs, uh, the new signs will be, the temporary signs will be eliminated when the new signs are constructed. So essentially that's the application. Presumably, you're updating it for branding purposes and then for the message that you're trying to convey, which is, seems very similar to what's there now.
Yes.
Does that sound about accurate?
Yes.
Um, so I provided in my report a picture of those existing signs and so just at a high level, um, the total area is not an issue of the sign being requested. The issue that I see as I reviewed it is, um, the, the commission and all its approvals has required these sort of brick surrounds and your proposal is to eliminate those brick surrounds. And they do, um, kind of a, uh, like a plastic type cabinet style sign.
So these cabinets are routed aluminum.
Okay.
With push-through acrylic letters. Um, the existing brick is crumbling. One, it is, uh, it's visible from the front. And the other one, it's happening on the back, probably not so visible on the front yet. Um, but it's, it's not something that we just wanna patch back together. Eventually, they're just gonna be dust.
Yeah, so I assume that you were having issue with the, the brick and that was why you were going this route. And all I'm saying is, my recommendation to the commission is utilize brick, stick with having a brick. So replace it, you could do a different color or something, but, um, my, uh, recommendation is to not eliminate entirely the brick surround that's, that's there now. Rebuilding it, replacing it, um, would be acceptable. The temporary signs present, um, some challenges that relates to the zoning code. So the two temporary signs being proposed are six feet tall, thirty-two square feet. Temporary signs are regulated pursuant to section eleven seventy-nine oh-nine of the, of the planning zoning code. They're limited to one twelve-square-foot sign four feet tall. This is, um, actually a recent amendment that the city did to its sign code in the last, last five years. Um, and thoroughly went through the temporary signage regulations and this ultimately is what was, um, codified into the code. So one temporary sign, twelve square feet, four feet tall. So the, the six feet and thirty, six feet tall, thirty-two square feet are not permissible, even if they're temporary. Because we have a section in the code that, that regulates that. So I, I had just stated, if the intent is to remove the temporary signs upon construction, new sign, I really wasn't sure why they were necessary, um.
Simply go.
I'm the, uh, can I speak?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, so I'm the temporary signs. Um, so we have two entrances that go to our building. One is an employee entrance and one is for deliveries. If there were one sign we would have, we probably would end up with a lot of traffic congestion. Truckers wouldn't know which entrance to use or visitors will call and et cetera. That's why currently look right now, depending on which way you're coming down Bavaria, they could end up passing the guard entrance and turning in. If I had, if I had the sign down in the employee entrance, they would, if I pass it and see, well, like, this is employee entrance here and pull into there, it would cause traffic congestion. It, it would be hard, with the two entrances, it would be hard to manage that flow of traffic.
Especially with the larger trucks.
You, your current sign, signage conveys that very message, correct?
Both signs do.
Yeah. So all I'm saying is, you could fabricate your new signs, have them fabricated, leave these existing signs up while they're being fabricated. And then when they're ready to be installed, you'll have a very temporary period in which your new signage is going up and your old one's being demolished. I'm not thinking it would be that long of a time period.
One day would be a lot. I mean, we'd probably get thirty, forty trailers in a day, which, it, so we would have to really strategically plan that they would have to be done all within the same day.
I mean, we could do this backwards. We could install the new ones and then demolish.
Sure, so that's a, yeah, that's another option. Or, or you could install one, get it up and then install the next one. I mean, it's conceivable you'll have some downtime, but very limited.
Right, yeah.
So as for the sign itself, you're, you're saying that it needs to be surrounded?
I, I'm making a recommendation to the commission that it should be, based on all of their, I mean, historical approvals. We just had one here in the last month or two, same issue. Um, they didn't wanna do a bricks surround, had this discussion and it was approved of the bricks surround. I'm suggesting that that should remain, but that's up to this commission.
I mean, do we have any gift for sticking with brand standards?
The, yeah, the reason, it, it, well, I'm the facility manager at that building there. I, I didn't specifically choose this sign. Um, that, this reincorporates the standard Greinger sign that goes into the distribution centers across the country. Um, but obviously if there's something, you can't do the city codes. You have to go back and revisit all this.
Kevin, could I mention something?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you can, that temporary sign, maybe you read this, that, uh, you can always try for a variance, but that's expensive and time-consuming and maybe it wouldn't, maybe leaving the old signs up until you get the new one would be a lot cheaper for you and save, you know, time is money.
Yeah. We could probably do it around, maybe one.
Couldn't they do, brick there? And everything stays as is, it sits right on top of brick?
Yeah, it doesn't necessarily have to be surrounded by brick, uh, you know, it, it, some kind of brick base.
Base?
Yeah, I, I, brick or, you know, stone of some sort, I'm trying to think of, uh, other ones to.
Because then it doesn't compromise the brand, we get that part, but.
Yeah, and I also think that would also be, would have longer.
No, it's okay, yeah.
Now, is there a preference when it comes to the brick foundations that you guys look for?
Your building is similar to that brick, where this, the brick color is out there right now, the rock. I would prefer to see it to stay that brick color. Um, I would also, almost envision, like, just kinda zooming in on it, you could just do, like, the brick, basically, it's, it almost looks like if you get rid of that pier right there, that's exactly what you're proposing. So I would just say keep that bottom or do the bottom of brick, do like a limestone, you're gonna go. And I would say keep it the same color as well, to match the building.
Okay.
Because it looks like it's gonna be a concrete base anyways.
Right.
It can, yeah, build a surround.
Yes.
But I don't think you have to have that back pier or. But I don't think you have to have that back pier or anything like that.
Just the base would be sufficient.
I think it would be simplistic enough, and get it all nice and, on top of it, over the block and stuff.
So I was just going to ask, with the temporary sign thing, so this was changed recently, it's a large property, a large building, so there was no stipulation based on the size of that building? And we can have the IX center there, and they can only have one temporary sign?
There's nothing in the code that articulates that.
So, and also going to, like, because I was going to ask the same question too, in terms of the temporary sign, could they just put like a, a banner out there while the sign's being swapped out? If we were formally talking a day or two?
Yeah, I think the.
It's almost like, almost like a coming soon, or a new business, that type of thing. I think, I, I mean, while I appreciate that sign is very nice-looking, I think from like a cost standpoint, I personally don't feel it's necessary to go that, to that nth degree. I think such something, understand with you from a logistics standpoint, so I would just think even just something printed on a banner, two states, to sit there for a day or two while the one's going up and.
Yeah, and the building commissioner has some ideas that he could talk to you offline about.
Okay.
Help you out. Okay.
So I guess, yeah, if they were willing to do the, the, the brick base, there was no other real issues with the permanent sign. And the temporary sign, we think you could probably work something out with the building commissioner. Either the way it's, the timing on the construction, or maybe he's got a little leeway for some, something temporary.
I know that landscaping was brought up, that they are planning on doing the exact same thing that they already have.
Currently out there?
Yep.
Is there anything, again, that landscaping was probably nineteen ninety-six? So, and they keep coming back every year.
Yeah, it's a money story.
Yeah. I mean, if, you know, people think, you know, perennials, they're just, the spring flowers coming back and. I mean, Greinger's going to work with whatever the city's rules and regulations are, so we're not trying to go do anything crazy.
Yeah, I ju, I see a lot of daylily and.
Daylilies, that's pretty.
And I don't, I don't object to that, as long as there's a little something around it, it looks good to me.
Do you, do you require there to be landscape around it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, some, some form of it. I mean, and it's, it's nice that your site has, has trees and stuff along there, so it's not like the only thing out there, so you just make it look good. You know, you really go nuts, because there are, there's other things, you know, maybe some minimal, like, like you mentioned, similar to kind of what you got right now, something around it, like that.
Yeah, no, I'm a hundred percent for all of, for the landscape around it, so that will, that will be part of kind of the project.
Well, I'm wondering, you know, is this something that, you know, if they agree to a brick base that matches the building, and landscaping, similar to what's there, but to be administratively approved, would you guys be okay with that? Let it be all an industry, since the sizes and everything else is okay?
Would the administration just leave reference to the temporary sign, whenever they determine that to be?
Would they need to get into specifics on what they would change on landscaping, so it's just part of the record? I mean, I'm not saying right now at this table, but.
Would they?
They would need to.
Probably, yeah, probably provide them with some detail of what you're actually going to, and get their, their approval on that. So I guess, I'll make a motion to approve the sign with the modification that there is a brick base to match the building. Landscaping around the sign to be approved administratively, and to work out administratively the temporary sign issue.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Francis, anything else you heard in there that?
Sounds great.
All right. Any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Have a very nice.
Thank you.
That's three.
All right. Next up is Valley Reserve Development, Mr. Kovalens. For this one, for the record, I'm going to accuse myself of abstaining from this due to a work relationship, and turn it over to Mr. Gomez.
And I'm, just while we're on the record, I've recused myself in the past when Mr. Kovalens has been in front of us, because I was, he's doing work on my property, but that work's done. I don't owe him any money there on any lien, so I've, I don't think I need to recuse myself, and I don't think it'll be a problem.
I'll still build my house, but we won't.
Running out of planning commission.
Mr. Acting Chair. It is. Vice Chair. Just for the record's sake, then, as Mr. Westburgs recused himself due to a potential conflict with employment-related matters with working with Pulte, we had another commission member state a prior recusal due to conflict of working with the builder at the table, who is the developer in this case. And then another member just stated that his home was built by the same individual. Just for the record, there are, there's, does not appear to be any actual conflicts, but I want to make sure the applicant is clear of those, and the commission members have openly stated there's no issue in their mind of their voting, but want to make sure you're okay with that with proceeding.
I am.
Are you sure?
Yes.
If you just go ahead and state your names for the record, and then just give us a brief overview, and we go, go with your review.
Yeah, my name is Chris Kovalens, Valley Reserve LLC, Valley, being a property on Valley View and Tinsford Road.
And I'm Keith Filipkowski with Pulte Homes. Keith Filipkowski with Pulte Homes.
Okay, thank you both. All right. I don't know if you want to give us just kind of a recap of where, from when we gave your preliminary site plan approval to where we are today, and then maybe just an overview of what, I think the one thing also just for the commission to understand would be what the relationship between your responsibilities would be and what Pulte's responsibilities would be, because I think there's going to probably be a divide, probably of some sort of what we're reviewing and approving here today, and then what we would be reviewing and approving from a Pulte standpoint moving forward. So just kind of an overview of that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I mean, Brian did a little bit of the, a preview of the past submittals and approvals, and the relationship was, I'll be the developer, selling lots to Pulte. They'll be responsible for building the house, grading, city walks for each resident, and any type of landscaping between them and the homeowner.
Street lighting, is that your responsibility?
That's my responsibility.
That is your responsibility, okay.
Entryways are my responsibility, in some subdivisions, the builder is, but in this one, I'm taking care of that. I submitted an entry sign, very similar to Shepherd Preserve that we did off of Shepherd.
Okay.
Be the same sign.
Okay.
Same type of mounding and trees. We had Wolf's Gate design a landscape plan for the entryway. You know, we, I saw something that maybe, maybe the, the entry was fine, but the residence, I don't know what we submitted for that, but I did submit a architectural, and landscape standards for Valley Reserve, and it did have the landscaper's responsibilities at the bottom.
Okay.
And one of the comments was adding a, a street tree for each unit, which is in our, in our agreement with, with Pulte, so.
Okay.
Also, architecture, you know, we, that has come up a couple times in here. Keith has talked to Pam Schultz from the City Architect, and has, is working with, with her. I'll let Keith maybe tell a little more about the processes there, but.
Yeah, just that I've reached out to her, looking at the, the comments she provided, I think in part clarification about what it is we were suggesting we'd like to offer, just based on her comments, coupled with obviously the litany of suggestions and/or requirements to do with the architecture. So same paging on that, all the while just working in big, big, to get to a point where we have mutually accepted the project in terms of what the architecture needs to be and what the city would require from. So that meeting is scheduled for this Wednesday, and we'll go from there. And on that note, I think the hope tonight, just to say it out loud, clears that, that there's, you know, land planning portion of this project is, goes forward without actual approval, but that's conditional upon the architecture seeing its way through in the first state.
Okay. All right, thank you both.
Yeah, very good.
All Mr. Francis, go through these comments, and then Mr. Javati will go from there.
Great. So I know you called me today, I had three Pulte people call me today, and I'm assuming you may have called about this, I didn't even know, but. And then, Chris, I know you called as well, so, yeah, sorry, I was just back from the first day from, from vacation.
Me too, so.
Not many people got my phone calls.
Yeah.
But, I know, Chris, the one thing you would ask about was just the scale, so if the one to fifty is fine, but this does not scale to a fifty scale. Like, you put it on here, it's not scaling to a fifty scale, so I don't know what they laid this out in versus what it was printed in, but it just was not scaled.
Oh, from what you have?
Yeah.
So we submitted the eleven-by-seventeens. I mean, if you print it out as a twenty-four-by-thirty-six.
This is what I received, this is not to scale.
No, that, that would, but I'm just saying, if you would print it out to, like, fit the page, but I think all submittals now are eleven-by-seventeen.
Yeah.
So if I gave you this here, it would be to scale, you know, the twenty-four-by-thirty-six sheet.
Oh, which, perfect, yeah, so that's what I would need to do with you.
Not a problem. I mean, I had asked, and that's what we were, you know. A lot of cities are going to, all submittals are eleven-by-seventeen, so even though they're not to scale, so.
But you could make a eleven-by-seventeen to scale, you can do half sheets, you could do.
Okay.
Yeah. Twenty-two-by-thirty-four.
Usually, that's.
Just more paper.
Yeah. Not a problem, but.
Yeah.
It was, yeah.
But for, for, for the reviewer's sake, so just when I put a scale on it, I got to understand how many M and Ms equal, you know, the distance and measure here, so I can't do that if it's, so that's all. The one to fifty is just fine.
Okay.
It's got to actually two scales.
Yeah.
Okay. My report dated February twenty-sixth. So in the background, as the applicant stated, I just kind of laid out the preliminary plan approval, July of twenty-twenty-four, and what, what the stipulations were. Adherence to the twenty-five-foot front yard setback, sidewalk constructed on one side of the street, adherence to a seven-and-a-half-foot side yard setback, and a twenty-to-fifteen between the two units, construction of no more than fifty-eight units, and approval of a conditional use by city council. So those were the stipulations that came out of that meeting. So as I go through, and I, I thought this was a request, so you're requesting final site plan approval. You're not asking, are you, are you wanting to create lots out of this meeting tonight?
Yeah, final site plan approval, yeah.
Okay.
So we had condition, or a preliminary back in, was it September?
Preliminary plan.
July, July, I guess, yeah. So, and, you know, the next step was to, and we got, the council approved the sidewalk. They made some, Nino and the mayor made some changes with sidewalks, what, what they wanted to see. That was approved, Resolution seventy-five dash twenty-twenty-four, I think in October, yeah, October twenty-fourth. So that, it's my understanding that was approved, you know, with that resolution. So we're just moving forward with the final site plan.
Okay. So your intent out of tonight is to be able to create lots?
Yeah.
So you want to be able to create the lots to be able to sell or have Pulte take those down on some schedule?
Yeah.
Okay. And so we have the, you know, you have street trees and things, we talked about that already. Is your intent then to, to bond those, those, those values? So you, you're going to have to put in trees, and so typically what happens is a financial guarantee is put up front for those types of things.
Yeah, I mean, I think the whole development, he's bonded, I mean, that's typically how. There's a development agreement between me and the city, what's?
I was just asking how that's calculated.
Yeah, isn't there a builder agreement?
I'm sorry, I, what was the question?
Just about bonding the elements that are seeking for approval.
Yeah, well, whatever we've done in previous subdivisions, I'm sure we'll follow the same pattern.
Yeah, there's this, one of Joe's comments, the last one, was standard development agreement, which I think it has some of those bondings and.
Probably does, yeah.
Listed in that, so.
Yeah.
That way, if we go under halfway through the project, it's, things are.
Well, that's it, yeah, I mean, not that, certainly, we don't think that's going to happen to you, and pray that doesn't, but, but for the city's sake, they got to have a way to go ahead and perform or effectuate what's been approved by this commission.
In the past, we submit, usually I submit the actual estimates to the city. Joe certifies that, I guess, and then that has to be backed up by some type of either a note or a bond. Typically, builders are doing notes now, but developers still.
And so my first comment under just the, the PUD itself, the conditional use, did that happen? The city council accepted the conditional use, they approved it?
That is my, you know, interpretation of what we submitted. We submitted after planning commission, it went to council. They were hung up more on sidewalks, which we had to resubmit the next month, getting Nino and the mayor to work through, and it was then approved, which, you know, it says here that, unless I'm reading this.
Do we have a copy of that?
Yeah.
And is what, you said there was a hangup about sidewalks?
What you had, what planning commission had approved, which this committee had approved, was not what the council wanted to see.
Correct.
So there was some extensions, and I think we added sidewalks to the opposite side, so there's dual sidewalks along the main road.
And this is.
Yeah, I remember that came back to us at some point last year, actually, I think it was after the meeting, we had a discussion about it.
This is sheet two of your site plan that I have up here? And that pink is the sidewalk?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that what was agreed by?
That was what was agreed, yeah.
By city council?
Yeah.
I could chime in just for a second, and I know that in the September meeting, council voted no, sidewalk on both sides. You're saying that in a subsequent meeting, a different drawing was submitted and council voted yes?
Yep, I worked with Nino.
That is correct.
That is? Okay, and I apologize, I did not have that second piece of legislation, I only had Resolution sixty-six. I did not have Resolution seventy-five, seventy-five being the October.
Yeah.
Legislation.
You may want to read this, I guess I'm not.
Yeah, I'm trying to research it online here on the fly.
I'm reading the waiver for the sidewalks, that, that was approved. It says, so it says, it reads as, "A resolution waiving the requirements for the construction of full sidewalks and otherwise confirming the conditional zoning certificate as approved by the City of Massasoys Planning Commission in regard to the Valley Reserve subdivision development project was offered by Ms. Giantoli for first and second and third readings by final, seconded by Mr. Jervis. The motion carried unanimously by a voice vote."
Yeah, that's what I'm reading.
So the only thing, it says that it was back, did it come, I don't, did it have to come back to us for the zoning certificate, for the conditional zoning certificate?
It was just for information purposes only, I think.
That's all it was, okay, okay.
So I think this has to go, once you approve this final site plan, it needs to go back, so the PUD, as by understanding, we, we submitted for the PUD approval, and then this final site plan, does it need to go back to council?
I think it had to go to council before it came to us for final.
I mean, I don't, I don't, I don't think so.
What, what you got approved was the conditional use. So there's this quirkiness in the code where you have two PUDs, Plan Unit Developments. One, in this zoning, is zoned R-one Residence District. You're governed by eleven-sixty-three-oh-two, A-five. Plan Unit Developments, when approved as a conditional use according to Section eleven-thirty-seven-oh-four, with such approval confirmed by a majority of council, and developed in accordance with the state. the standards of eleven sixty-three oh five, with the exception that A B C, A B C. That's different than the provisions outlined in eleven eleven sixty-three oh five for the approval process. Your approval for the use as a planned unit development is governed by a conditional zoning certificate. It sounds like you went and got council confirmation of that conditional zoning certificate. Then you should be done with council, I believe.
Okay.
Then the process remains here.
That's true, what happened all the time again. Yeah, it says sidewalks and conditional zoning, so.
I mean, Mr. Eddie, I'm sure with this.
Yeah, resolution seventy-five and the fourth, whereas it says, I just read it, requirement of the construction of full sidewalks be waived, and a minimum of sidewalks on one side of the road be allowed, passed unanimously, like you said.
Right.
I was not aware of that, so that changes my memo, but seventy-five, which is after sixty-six.
It reads kind of.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So not have it written front of me, written format. I think what they did was exactly what you see in front of you. They 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 said you don't have two sidewalks on both sides of the road.
Right.
And we're confirming the conditional zoning certificate that was approved by the planning commission.
Yeah. And Brian, for what it's worth, the drawing that was attached to resolution seventy-five, the sidewalk mirrors what you have in pink.
And that you're saying was a.
I drew that up, so I know what it is.
And I remember that came, you brought that back to us, just as FYI, we refined it at that, for the sidewalks on one side of the road, so I think we'll get there.
Yeah, so it sounds like we're good. Mr. Walrath, you want, you might want to just submit that into the record as an exhibit to any authorization you provide to it?
Do you need this back?
I know.
She can have it.
You do.
Well, I just thought you're gonna need to make some revisions to your final plan anyhow. Just if you can list the date of the approved conditional zoning certificate.
Okay.
Hopeful, just for tracking purposes, that we're all on the same page.
Yeah, that would be good.
You could even reference the resolution number.
That's what I would do.
Yeah. Previously, you were showing some phasing. Are you not doing it in phasing now?
We are. It does show it. It's very hard to see.
It does, yeah.
Ever, you're not the only, we've had Dominion and others comment that it, if you look at it, there is a slashed line. It runs along the lot lines. It's easy to see on the west side of it, but.
It took me a minute to find.
Yeah. So we are highlighting highlighting that in a colored, so it's a little more.
Oh, okay.
And and I think at the last meeting, you wanted us to take the lot eight and put it in phase two.
I think that's what the conclusion was you were gonna do. You're still doing.
Which we did. We did that. So we shorted up that road. You don't have that T intersection.
Yeah. Yeah, because eight was previously here, the thirty-seven is, I think.
Yeah. Eight, yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So you're phasing, and you'll just pretty up the documents so it's clear.
Exactly. Yeah. And I think Joe even had that in his, I got his notes today. We're working through those and making some updates.
And then my item number three, lots one through five, seventeen and forty-nine are impacted by wetlands. Do you see some some kind of documentation that you can?
Came through the set.
Okay.
We're good.
So all those those lots are, there's jurisdictional approval to do what they want to do.
Correct, and he's purchased the credits.
Okay. All right, great. Let's come back to number four for just a minute. That's architecture. Let's just talk real quick. Five landscaping, development entrance, individual lot is being provided. I just said generally landscaping is appropriate for the entrance, but minimal for the individual lots. And so you should have a street tree for each sub lot. You're saying you've already agreed to that.
Yeah.
You should show what those street trees are on the on the on your plan, revised plan.
Okay.
Do you have a landscape sheet that describes out what they are? Do you know what kind of street trees you're proposing use?
Um, I think like celebration maple, something like that, that seems to be, used to be the pear that's over.
Yeah, don't use a pear. But I was gonna suggest if it's okay to maybe bring in, to do two species, whether you alternate them or group them somehow. You just, you never know.
Uh huh.
Like with the pear, like with ash, like with the elm, it could be a disease that comes through it before you know it, you have no trees. So.
It's a good idea.
Um, we don't like monocultures. So if you can try to find two, and I think celebration is fine. Pick one other one.
Any suggestions on what you?
Yeah, I I know I just said elm, but there's a frontier elm that I like for street trees. I think it would complement. Has a really good fall color that would offset with the celebration maple nicely. So. And that's a disease resistant elm, frontier elm.
I think that's what I have in front of my house.
Yeah.
It's nice until a storm blows it over.
Yeah, I would maybe do that. How do you like the seedless sweetgums?
Sweetgums are okay. The only thing is they drop the, I mean, you have to get like a really sterile, um, yeah, they drop those, we call them gumballs. But they're, those can be problematic, especially in messy. So I don't know. I like ginkgos. It's another option. That would have a nice fall color to complement the maple. So just, yeah, find a good one. I'm sure you'll you'll come up with something.
Okay.
And then probably get into that issue. The eleven thirteen oh two five records that construction agreement, performance bond, that's something you could you could submit. The commission's okay. Submit that as a contingent to the approval.
Yeah, I'm waiting for the city to put that together. It takes some time.
Looks like it just came through at four fifty-five.
Okay.
You don't have it done?
Yeah.
Come on.
No, I think it is done, but we'll probably get it to you tomorrow. I gotta take a look at it.
You're not intending to petition council to levy a special assessment?
No.
To do it? Okay, that's fine. Wanted to make sure.
For what?
So there's a provision that you can petition council levy a special assessment in lieu of a performance bond, maintenance bond, and to tie it to the lots. But it's a, it's a, it's a pain, and it's a process. So we'd rather you not do it if you're comfortable just doing a traditional route.
Yeah, I mean, I think the way the agreement reads, at least the ones in the past, that it's a performance bond or another approved source by the city, which for Spruce, we did just a cash bond, which we drew from with draws. A lot of developers now, which I'm hoping the city will allow, is to with the loan, use that as collateral. So and the city would have to sign off on all draws. But we'd have to work through that administratively.
I think a letter credit is good, too.
Letter credit, yeah.
Yeah, we did the draw approach for Spruce, Bill Crossings.
Good to remember. Um, covenants restrictions?
I sent that to them, to the city today.
Okay.
This afternoon, and I have them here. They'll just have to review, and they're a hundred and three pages of any of that stuff.
Yeah, I will look at them, so, but not, you know, too late.
Yeah, yeah.
So just recommend that be contingent upon approval. And then we already talked about scale. So, yeah, I don't see any reason to not require or approve it subject to, based on my comments. Now, architecture, I think you provided just, you provided just a front elevation, no side rear elevations. The planning commission's gonna wanna see that. What, you know, and certainly I think talking through architecture is important, but there's a lot to look at. And I've had a brief conversation with Pam about architecture. So I think the preference at this time would be to not approve architecture tonight. You can have some conversation, I think, with the commission, but come back at a later date, particularly since Ms. Schultz still has some questions, comments, concerns that need to be worked through. That'd be my recommendation.
So said another way, we're unable to achieve architectural approval administratively. We would need to get the consensus with her and come back and get the vote of this board as well.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, you need to work through with the consultants and the administration, and then it comes to this commission for approval.
Let me ask a question. Can I ask Mr. Chairman?
Yeah. Where was the architecture with during the preliminary plan? Why didn't this come out? The fact that now Pulte is doing it, I think that's the change. There there seemed to be no, I didn't hear from Pam earlier in this process. Isn't this kind of odd at the last, for the final approval, now to suddenly have a bunch of architectural questions? Sort of lateness in the process, don't you think?
Well, yeah, I don't know. I I don't know when Pulte was brought into this process and the project. Probably recently.
Recently.
Yeah. So that's big, that's a big part of the reason why you're just seeing Pulte's architecture now, because they were just brought into the process.
So is that relevant, though, when you had the preliminary approval and all that? Now, now the architecture changes because it's Pulte rather than Co-Blunt's homes building the.
Well, I could tell you in the past, we've not, we have, we have already submitted a lot more than we typically have in the past. So.
Did you answer your question?
No. Willing to work with Pam, but yeah, we have a pretty detailed list of what we require for each resident. And it seems like since Pulte is brought into this, we are gonna need to go above and beyond.
Well, I see that she's incorporating Northwoods, which was the Pulte. Is that a problem or will be a problem, like trying to incorporate that type of architecture into redevelopment there?
I modeled my my standards off of Northwoods, but I know there's a lot of things added since Northwoods. So that is where things will have to work through.
Well, that was my question. I I was kind of curious about the timing for all these requirements suddenly.
Yeah, and I don't think at preliminary level, we require that this depth of architecture as a preliminary plan level.
Yeah. And that was gonna be a question I had, just in discussion here. I asked about this requirement to come back and be subject to planning commission vote. Is that actually a requirement as a function of getting a PUD approved, or is that just a recommendation to come back?
No, it's a requirement.
It's a requirement.
Gotcha.
We would require that, especially for this big of a development.
Sure.
The amount of, I mean, we can get into more of the the questions that I have regarding that here in a few minutes when Mr. Frings and Mr. Jolati are done.
Eleven thirty-seven oh five C ten, four elevations, including a front, rear, and two side elevations, together with additional views or cross sections, if necessary, to indicate completely the exterior appearance of the structure. All elevations shall be drawn to the same scale, which shall not be less than one eighth of an inch to one foot, except that the front elevation may be drawn to a larger scale. Each elevation shall show the accurate location of windows, doors, shutters, chimneys, porches, and other architectural features, all materials and finishes, and accurate finished grade line, existing topography, and major vegetation features. That's a requirement. If this planning commission see those.
We're not gonna require, once we review the architecture, we want to require on a per lot basis, we come back in front of us. Okay, I didn't think so.
I mean, unless you.
I wouldn't think so. No, I wouldn't think so either. I just wanted to make sure that that wasn't, I wasn't misunderstanding.
I think the Pulte approach, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but haven't worked with you before, the Pulte approach is, we have forty-five different elevation styles for two homes.
Right.
And so we're asking you to look at and approve all these. I'm being a little facetious. And once that's approved, you don't have to come back here and get each one approved.
Okay.
Just apply accordingly onto the lots.
Yeah, and those are reviewed against the standards set forth and approved by planning commission on an individual basis when we submit for a building permit.
Got it. Okay.
But not through separate ARB process.
I didn't think so. I just wanted to confirm, because I was gonna say that's a lot of.
That's a lot.
Houses to be coming in here. Do you mind if I ask another question?
No, it's your meeting. I'm good.
Yeah, I got my. I do have just one other question. So in regards to, you know, I know you've set your standards, and I haven't had a chance to go through all of them, but in terms of, I'm guessing that you've already laid out that like two houses of similar looks can't be placed next to each other, correct? They're all gonna have to kind of vary throughout there. You're not gonna have a white house and another white house and another white house, and they all exactly the same. The standard should lay out that they're kind of all very in different materials and looks and stuff, correct?
Of course. But the exhibit here will explain that.
Okay, that's fine.
In terms of diversity requirements that the code means states, obviously what we did in Northwoods.
Okay.
Are two different things. So that's part and parcel to the clarification. Discussion needs to go on with Pam, and what's, what's a good collaborative approach to make sure that we're all meeting in the middle.
Okay.
Perfect. Not only do we spell out the proximity, but we also state the qualifiers, be it colors, roof styles.
Perfect.
Doors, etc.
Okay, cool. That works for me.
I think you could have white, white and white next to each other.
Yeah, I was, it was just, I'm talking like, just completely white, no detail or anything like that with another white. No, yeah, no, we're, we're on the same page. Mr. Jolati?
Oh, my turn.
Yes, sir.
All right. So a lot has changed since I wrote this memo a couple of weeks ago. So bear with me. I'm not sure any of it applies anymore, but I'll go through it one by one. So actually, maybe the first one does still apply. The typical pavement section looks good, except it shows sidewalks at four foot wide. They're usually five foot wide as standard, so.
Yeah, I wanted some clarification. I don't like, Northwoods was four foot, the whole development.
Really?
And Spruceville was five foot.
Okay. Yeah, which says an eighty-eight thing.
Okay.
Five foot.
Yeah. Then I don't have any problem.
Okay, yeah. All right. So five foot there. We already talked about the sidewalk. Sounds like we have resolution seventy-five in place, so that's that comment. Next one is regarding wetlands, which the information came through this afternoon. I forwarded it along to you two gentlemen, but it's got the jurisdictional determination from the Army Corps, paid for the credits. So I think we're through with that item. Stormwater management, we're reviewing that as part of our administrative review for final permitting. I think we sent some comments back to you late last week, for what it's worth. I thought it was a pretty good set of plans and calculations that Dan put together for you, so that's a good thing.
Good.
Makes our life a little easier. Sanitary sewer needs to be bored under Twinsburg Road. You do show that in the detailed plan, so thank you. Private utilities installed in conduit, that's part of the development agreement. That verbiage is always in there. Streetlight locations look good, and so does the detail. It's the city standard. Development agreement we talked about, that just came through to you and I at four fifty-five this afternoon. So Nino and I will have to take a look at that, and if it's all good, we'll get it to you for a signature. And that's all I have. So only one of my comments even still applied.
Okay.
Lots happening. I'm gonna have to wait till the last second to write my memo. That's not fair to you guys.
Yep. No?
No.
Why are you asking?
Coming late into this, but I mean, the length of the roads and the number of drawing units require secondary means of vigorous, very similar to what you did at Spruceville Development.
We proposed a through street, which was kicked back to us that they, this commission wanted cul-de-sac. And they also approved the length, since it is, I think, under the twelve hundred feet.
Yeah, I did the math. One was twelve sixteen, the other was thirteen eighty-seven. If I added those numbers up correctly.
Yeah, I mean, it was approved with the last supplemental for the length. I mean.
Okay. Like I said, they come in late, and they ask me to make comments, and those are things.
No, I mean, we had the last fire review with the last set of plans. So I mean, that's why we went forward with the, with drawing all the.
Through street.
Yeah.
Yeah. And it doesn't have to be a through street. It just has to be a approved fire apparatus access route. And that can be, you know, you know, not necessarily a through street, but can be gated, or can be, you know, just something that would support a fire apparatus.
I mean, I think the, all the cul-de-sacs are set, so a fire truck can turn around for the radiuses. I mean, I think all the cul-de-sacs are set, so a fire truck can turn around for the radiuses. Talking about secondary address, if your main entrance is somehow blocked. Yeah, I would want to see your comments from the preliminary approval.
Yeah, there wasn't anyone involved with that.
Well, there was another person from the fire department, I think that was.
I remember we had a discussion about this.
Yeah. We wanted it to connect the Valley View, but the commission wanted to see it as a non-through street, so. So I'll look back to our files and see if we have something to comment from the previous. And you said that was, the original was how long ago?
June, July.
July.
July of last year. I know there was discussion about it. I know there was, we had approved a length. We'd have to go back through the minutes on that, but.
If I can, Mr. Chairman, the road layout as it's proposed right now is what was approved.
That's what I thought. I was just about to ask. I'm not, nothing was jumping at me that it had changed where it would have pushed into a different category. I thought this was all approved or drawn as approved previously.
I mean, the only thing we changed since the last approval was something that we, remember the box?
Right.
We moved some units around.
Yeah.
A foot or two.
Kind of picked that up, but that was.
I mean, we had a pretty detailed drawing the last time.
You included it again.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw it.
It was approved by the board and approved by the departments that were, yeah, yeah, I did include it, sorry.
Yeah, no, it was.
Yeah, I said, so.
And you got, the commission did grant the exception to the road, which is.
The length, that's what it was, okay. I know there was an exception we granted.
Which is frankly, it's a, that's an old, like six hundred feet is a maximum. I mean, this is twenty twenty-five, maybe nineteen seventy, that would have been applicable, but.
And it was the fire department's recommendation to phase that one lot, Lot Eight, into Lot Thirty-seven to put it in that second phase, if you remember. We had a T-street there and they didn't like.
That's why I remember that.
The length of their fire trucks turning around. So would have been nice to have it in phase one, doesn't matter, but. So at that time, it would have been hopefully noted that they didn't like the length of the street or wanted a secondary access. And our original plans had a secondary access, so just point that out too. It's hard to redesign a whole development, you know, when you're going for final approval, when you've already had conditional approval or primary approval.
So what does Brian recommend we do now?
I just did have a couple, yeah, I just did have a couple of questions. I did have a couple of questions. Maybe it's not jumping on the mailbox. Where'd you guys land on putting those? Are they individual or is there a pad for them to put together?
It has to be a pad.
I thought it had to be a pad. I'm just, it's not, I'm kind of zooming around the road to see if I can find it. As long as you guys have it, then I'm okay. I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't something that all of a sudden, I see the two parking spaces on the one.
I don't think I, we show it at this time, so that would be something I'd need to add.
I was gonna say, if you don't have it on here, then I think that needs to be identified.
Yeah.
I would agree, Scott. That's a good question.
Yeah, I was kind of quickly looking and I didn't see it.
I think it was one of Pam's notes, actually.
Are you okay approving that administrative, that they locate that?
Yeah.
So anybody else on commission have any comments or questions?
I know.
So I think to kind of do a quick recap here. Think what. I'm sorry, I was just going through a couple of their comments. In terms of an approval tonight for the final plat, will you guys be re, you'll be making all these corrections and then submitting them to the city to then approve the final plat corrected and then next?
I mean, like, so here, there's just a couple minor things from what I.
Yeah, I think it just has to be, that has to be spelled out, and I think agreements have to be put in place, because I know that to give, for an approval to be given.
I mean, I would think it would be approved and then Pulte would need to come back to approve their architecture, which is gonna be.
That's gonna be my recommendation, is that we separate the architecture out from this review and approval, because it really is, if we're just strictly doing the plat, I think a conditional approval on the plat for some of these little outstanding items in our project, that the architecture has to be taken out completely separate and brought back to council.
Why don't we, I mean, we can include, get a street trees included and mailbox locations.
Yeah.
And architecture for the homes. Those will be our three remaining items that we'll have to come back for.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so I went through it and made notes kind of as we were going through this. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we approve the final plat for the planned unit development with the following conditions. That any outstanding items addressed by Mr. Franz and Mr. Giladi are addressed. Some of those specifically being the phasing is identified clear on the plans. The wetlands letters of jurisdictional approval are provided to the city. Landscaping for the entrance to the development is addressed in a separate approval. That is inclusive of street trees in the development.
I thought that was gonna come back, when they come back for the trees.
That is.
So it wouldn't be.
They have to come back, is it?
Yeah.
It's a separate approval.
So I submitted an entry picture. For Wolfski did a entry landscaping plan.
The piece.
Sign location and types of trees, I think.
Sixty-six.
I did see that. Did you have a chance to review that?
Yeah, I thought it looked good. I actually didn't have a comments for once.
The only thing is the tree in front of each house.
Correct.
That's.
All right, I'll retract that then. So the landscaping entrance is approved as submitted? The construction agreement, performance bond, and maintenance bond are to be approved before final plat is signed off on? The covenants and restrictions are reviewed and approved by the city? Which I, that happened today, is that correct?
No, wetlands, you can take that one off.
All right, okay. So yeah, so that's still in the condition of approval. Covenants and restrictions are reviewed and submitted to the city for approval. And then Mr. Giladi's, the only two that were outstanding from his was the sidewalks are to be five foot in width. And that the stormwater management plan be approved by Mr. Giladi. What will be coming back in front of the board as a separate approval will be the architecture of the homes proposed. The locations of the mailboxes be shown and agreed upon. That should probably realistically be part of your plat too, because it's gonna, I don't know how that's gonna potentially affect your layout. I mean, I'm guessing it would probably just go on common area somewhere, but I would say maybe at least identify it on there. I don't think it has to be.
And maybe the one tree in front of each house, that's a brand new one.
That's the new ones. And the other one would be for the trees that would be going in front of the homes.
Right.
Be reviewed and approved by the board as well.
That's as a separate?
Yes, that's as a separate. The street trees for the homes, the architecture, and the final location of the mailboxes.
So those are the three things we'll come back for?
Those are the three things you will come back for. Those are not part of the plat approval today.
Is that a motion?
That was my, that was my motion.
I'll second it.
Anybody feel that I missed anything?
That was very thorough.
Yeah.
Street lighting and signs, so it's for later date.
Street lighting.
I thought that was already.
Street lighting.
It was addressed in this packet that we received today.
Okay.
And Mr. Giladi.
We're okay with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The standard, city standard colonial lights with a hundred and fifty degrees.
Entrance sign you did not submit, that would be done separately, correct? The actual sign itself.
Yeah, I thought I did, but maybe I didn't.
I don't.
Yeah, I might not.
Okay, sorry. So that would be the only other additional item that would be coming back for final approval. So I'll run through those, those last four items essentially that would be coming back for approval to this board would be entrance signage, location of the mailboxes, architecture, and street trees in front of the homes. Those four items are not approved tonight and are part of future approval. Did you get all of that?
Kind of messy, but yeah.
Give me a second.
Yes.
Second.
And further discussions?
I believe I heard you say that's all inclusive on a revised plan to scale.
I did. All right.
It's on the record.
Go ahead. All approved?
All okay?
Aye.
Yeah.
Aye.
All right.
Thank you both.
Yep.
Have a great night.
Good to see you.
Thanks.
So there's no need to call you?
Love to catch up with you.
Yeah. But I didn't know if those were rich or being.
No, that one wasn't.
Yeah.
Brand.
Yeah, I talked.
All different things.
I talked to Brad.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which we need to talk, just talk.
Yeah, for sure.
Let the record show that Mr. Westbrook has rejoined.
Woke up. You're on number five now.
All right.
Okay.
All right, next up is Peak Nano, eighty-eight fifty-four Valley View Road, patiently waiting. Thanks. Thank you. Can we get your name from the record?
Trevor Eckstein, from Ice Company.
Why don't you, this is, this is a new one, so why don't you just give us a brief overview of what, what is planned out here in what Peak Nano?
Peak Nano is a plastics film manufacturing company, and they're expanding. They're actually a little north of this current location for where they're planning to build here. And they just, they get plastic pellets, they heat them up in the oven, and they stretch them out flat and roll film for capacitors for the new electric car industry coming up. Capacitors are really a big seller for them, and that's why they're expanding.
Okay.
So they're big things. So they need a lot of, a lot of space indoors. They're ordering equipment from Germany, which has been purchased, so that equipment has a delivery date, which is why things are overlapping on this project where we need to get a roof over their delivery location, so. So yeah, things are kind of going to be phased in this project.
Okay.
You'll probably, you know, probably submit for footers and foundations and then, you know, core and shell and then interior build outs. Things move fast at this point.
This is where the, that landscape supplier or whatever, it's like rock or something.
Like concrete.
Are they some.
So they would, they would go away.
They're gone or?
They're, they're purchasing property off.
Off of them, okay.
Then they're, they're gonna pack up and leave.
Okay.
Okay. Guys, I still see trucks going down.
I did too. I was kind of asking the question. I was like, I wasn't sure if you guys were gonna share it with them or what. Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, then, Mr. Franz, should I go over, start your comments?
Sure. And so as I understand, then it is just, once acquired, it's one single user, the applicant.
That is correct. It's not a tenant.
My report dated March first. So the applicant is proposing to construct forty-eight foot tall, two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand square foot manufacturing building. Property located eight-eight-five Port Valley View Road. The site does contain two parcels, one point four four acres, which fronts on, on Valley View and in the back, larger, obviously, piece is thirty-eight point seven nine acres. Zoned general industrial. A portion of the property is located in Northfield Center Township. And I show it as a red triangle on my little aerial. Is he intent to maintain that in Northfield Center?
Yeah, that's why we drew our property line at that, at that municipality line. So that we don't have to go pull permits in two different municipalities and get construction licenses in two different municipalities. So that Peak Nano will fall solely in Macedonia.
And all of those, what appears to be trailers or some sort of outdoor storage, that'll eventually be gone?
Yeah, that's my understanding is that's, that's part of the current site owner.
Yeah.
So.
And if it is, that's all gonna be gone with this.
It's my understanding of it, yes.
So in the, the site plan proposes the two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand square foot building with future, a potential future expansion area as well. That's included onto the, to the site plan. Shows rail spurs.
Yes, sir.
And the concept location for stormwater management, some landscape mounting to assist with screening the building from Valley View. There's a seventy-five foot access easement provided to the south and coming from the existing entrance driveway. I just, I didn't know what the purpose of that access driveway, and hence my question about what's gonna remain on the site.
Yeah, it'll be for future development. And I have, excuse me, I have sketched up a hundred thousand square foot building on that site in that triangle with the proper setbacks from our districts.
In the triangle in Northfield Center?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
And so I, and I don't, I stay out of the politics, but I'm sure the city would love to have that in Macedonia as opposed to.
Yeah, I don't know how it's gonna work out, because nobody can access it from, you know, the other side, the Northfield Township, so. And it would be your fire department and your police department responding to anything in that area, so.
Good. Well, thanks for the clarification, just wasn't sure what the purpose of that access easement was. Um, the, from a use standpoint, um, the general industrial district does permit uh warehousing and that kind of comes via um, the LI district, so it's kind of a Euclidean approach. Um, and specifically permits outdoor storage with certain screening setback standards. The access to that general industrial land is provided through an existing driveway with zoned residential. To the best of my knowledge, a driveway located through residentially zoned lands to access non-residential property is acceptable. I, I don't see any prohibition in, in the code anywhere.
I, I will have to submit for a variance in the curb cut.
With. Oh, okay.
So we understand that, um, and you know, they won't have many trucks, I mean, three a week or three or four a week. But those trucks need to make that turn.
Because the, the three or four a week is bringing in the raw product that then gets turned into the pellets and then loaded onto the rail?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's their incoming and outgoing. It's not, it's not high traffic.
Yeah.
It's not high traffic.
So from a preliminary development plan standpoint, uh, the plan does adhere to the setback standards identified in section eleven sixty-nine oh four F. The height is forty-six feet, which adheres to the maximum of sixty feet. Now comes the parking issue, so the legend of the site plan states that a hundred and thirty-two off-street parking spaces are provided and the building's proposed to be the two thirty-eight oh seven oh. But sheet PP one states that the building's proposed to be two thirty-eight eight seventy and a hundred and thirty-six parking spaces are provided. Sheet PP one also provides a breakdown for the uh usage of the building. That breakdown totals two thirty-nine oh fifty-one. I'm assuming it's just clerical mistakes?
It's, well, it's, it's when I'm working on it and Matt Webber's working on his.
You already, you just, you just told us the problem, Matt Webber.
Yeah. He says hello, by the way.
I think we should bring him in here, drag him in here. He's probably racing some Porsche somewhere. You heard that, man.
I'll make him. I can make available next time, so.
Alright, so yeah, those, just clear up those, it's minor discrepancies, just clear those up.
And I didn't know I can get a twenty percent reduction I, uh, in parking, but uh that'll be my other variance request is city's parking, so.
At the end of the day, the twenty percent is just there, right?
Yeah.
But you still need a variance, you don't have enough parking, so. And my suspicion is you, you know what your parking needs are based on that building.
It's, it's overparked at a hundred and thirty-six spaces, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so. So yeah, you just have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals to seek that, that variance. So uh, comment number four, section eleven seventy-one eleven E two permits off-street parking in the front yard providing a screen with landscaping. I just stated that um landscape mounting should be extended slightly to the south to properly screen the parking in front of the building. Fairly minor, but just needs to be extended a little bit. Uh, and then you already talked about the maximum drive apron at thirty-six feet.
Yes.
You're gonna seek a variance for that. We already talked about that um, that uh access easement. And it doesn't sound like those trailers and such, that's all gonna go away, which is a welcome sign.
Yeah, and I, I'm not sure when this picture was, was taken either, so they might already be gone. I haven't been out there a lot.
Uh, let me look at that picture. Uh, that is recent.
I'm sure they're still there.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, that was, that was probably, that was probably in um the fall of just about a year, so. Re- reasonably recent. Um, comment seven, sheet E zero addresses site lighting, but it's not legible, so just provide an updated photometrics plan. It's just hard, it was just too hard to read. And laser corrections surgery, it still doesn't help me.
Yeah, the, the PDFs can zoom in and read those pretty clearly, but I'll, I'll change the height of the text.
Well, I'm an old fashioned old man, I love paper.
Good.
Uh, building architectures documented on sheet eight through oh one proposes precast um wall panel. I'm assuming it's like tilted up construction is what you're.
Precast?
Yeah. The bill, so the building ar- architecture is subject to standards outlined in eleven seventy-two of the code. I just recommended that um Ms. Schultz review it and she may have comments in here.
I will be reaching out to Pam.
Yeah, so we just wanna work through, make it a um conditional on, get, work it through with those comments with um Ms. Schultz. Dumpster location, just needs to be documented on the final plan. Any building mechanical units should be depicted and methods to screen them. And in stormwater management, you have a concept location of the stormwater management. I'm sure the engineers up high need full details for your next um approval process, so. Love that you guys are acquiring it on behalf of these guys or you're developing it and they're gonna take over. However that arrangement is, it's gonna clean up the site and bring jobs to the city, so it's a great, great use of the property. Look forward to helping finalize the project.
So you didn't have any real, you know, some comments, some, some, some things to note, some things to clean up, but, but no major problems with anything on the site?
No, 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 just, I mean, all stuff, just little details to work through. You gotta get some variances and come back for the final plan approval.
We're not concerned with the comments either.
Good, good, good.
Mr. Gelati? Yeah. Uh, yeah, happy to see you guys are redeveloping the site. I feel the same way, Brian, so that's a good thing. Stormwater management, you already touched on that, so uh when you get to that uh part in the process, Matt Webber will put together all the appropriate detailed design and calculations, so that shouldn't be an issue, so.
He said he'd have it to me today, so.
Oh, really?
There is no doubt.
Reach out to him. I was gonna see, I'll get it about two in the morning.
Three.
Yeah, or three, that's tomorrow.
Tell him he's late.
Yeah. Uh, I also raised a question about the future development to the south of, of the property here and you do have the easement. So you already spoke to that. Are you indicating that the, I guess we'll call it the triangle for lack of a better word, would eventually be a separately owned parcel with a completely separate business on it? And if, and if, if that's the case, you would need, that parcel would need an access easement all the way to Valley View Road?
Well, the ac- the access, um, I see what you're saying. It, yeah, they would have to extend that to uh the existing access? The easement would have to go through the existing?
Yeah, I think so, yeah, yeah. That was a landlocked parcel, which I'm not even sure if that's allowed, but if it was, they'd have to have any access easement all, get them all the way to a public road like Valley View.
That's a good question. Would, if, if we split that off, do I need to provide frontage?
It becomes landlocked, so I don't know. It's usually not allowed, but I, I would defer to him.
Yeah, I'd have to have a
Yeah.
A leg in the property line, come out and give me the frontage, huh?
Is it?
Across tracks.
Across, across tracks.
Yeah, it's a, it's an unusual one for sure.
So you, I'm sorry, were you thinking you would create that as a separate parcel?
I'm assuming that's why the.
Well, I mean, right, right now, it's, it's all purchased as one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if, if um if Peak Nano builds it and leases it, it's not an issue then, right? So I don't know how that arrangement's gonna go in the future.
Yeah, and, and I don't know that that, you know, is a, a topic for tonight, I guess. I'm just asking the question.
No, it's, it's a good thought.
Would it be one parcel or does a triangle get split off? If it gets split off, it certainly presents some more complications.
Yeah, right, right now, it's, it's the whole boot.
Yeah.
The whole boot looking shape parcel, so.
Yeah, let's just all keep that in mind going forward. Alright, let's keep going. Uh, it'd be nice to have a topographic map. We just get the one plan sheet right now.
Yeah, we just, we just reserved this, received the survey a week ago.
Okay, alright, so it's forthcoming?
Yes.
Okay, so that would be good.
I need it too, to do my studies for the screenings, so.
Oh, I'm sure, yeah. And then along those lines, uh, it'd be nice to see how utilities, connections, or how this uh new building is gonna be serviced by the different utilities.
Yeah, Matt, Matt will have our utility plan.
That'd be fantastic. And uh, I, I see that you're proposing to pave the driveway that uh leaves the site and heads to the north, which.
Up to the, up to the cul-de-sac.
Up to the cul-de-sac of where it becomes a public road again, to that, at that cul-de-sac, and, and I think that's a great idea to pave that road. But I do gotta ask the question, eventually that road leaves the subject property and goes on to property that's owned, I believe, by the railroad. And then the JWD property also utilizes this um, so let's call it a private access drive, so I I think all three of those need to somehow come together. Uh, we just need to be sure that it's all above board, so we're not permitting you to do work on somebody else's property, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I'll reach out to uh Simon Kaplan and see what he arranged with, the seller in the market.
Yeah, that would be good, you know, and it may wind up a little bit similar to the uh NCR apartments or Divinity Landing, whatever they call themselves, where we wound up with three different people using one private driveway, so we, we had to get it up to code, let's call it. So, let's keep that in mind as we go uh forward as well. And then uh, you know, the parking lot driveway needs to be curved and, and I know this is just a preliminary plan that doesn't really say one way or another if it's curved, so.
So is that the all-access roads and fire roads and everything curved?
Well, I, I kinda think that's where we started, yeah.
Okay.
That's all I got. That's enough.
Uh, and we, actually, the fully commissioner and I met earlier and we reviewed the things that the fire firm was concerned about as far as sprinklers, fire line, and three sixty access and fire lines. They were okay with all that. Not in this one. Plan and commission, I've, I've.
Pre-app meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm curious, wh- what is, what is this road, this road like there? What, what is that?
That's, that's railroad track.
Well, I thought the railroad track was, was the.
Yeah, it's on both sides.
Oh, you got two, oh, so that's a railroad track right there.
Yep, on the east side, we'll be pulling a spur off of that. Well, we'll be designing a spur for that. I don't know if in this phase, they'll actually.
And so this, this road here would be, you go over the, goes over the railroad track, I guess, this little, little path here and there, yeah.
Yes, that, that's an existing access.
Nina, you have anything?
Right.
Okay. Questions from you guys, anything else besides the time you had?
I'll go, 'cause it, it kinda pigtails off of his. Um, you mentioned that the product, their finished product goes out on rail? Are you?
Well, um, no, I think they're incoming.
So materials come out on rail?
Come in on rail.
I don't know if you, if you know enough to speak to this, but does that significantly increase the railroad, rail traffic on that spur? Like, are they getting trains twice a day or, you know?
No, no, um, no, it's, it's uh plastic pellets that would come in, spur off of that around back and uh it would have a, a vacuum type pipe system to pull that from the rail uh into the building. And then that's, that, that's incoming product, so I think uh I think it's actually kinda slow going from that because they melt it so thin for uh the capacitor, so it's, it's they can bulk up and have, have stock.
They're not getting load in every day, you know, it's not, they're concerned.
That's the spirit of the question, is there's two residential neighborhoods and that spur continues on, so is it gonna increase traffic that's gonna pull in between those neighborhoods, stop back into, back into theirs?
Well, I, you say increased traffic, I mean, one, one rail a week would increase traffic, so.
Well, yeah, I guess what I'm saying, i- is it once a week, twice a week? I don't, I don't expect you to know that, but I would like to hear some more information on that in the future.
I don't, I don't see it as being high traffic.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, if outgoing trucks aren't that high and then incoming is used up slower than outgoing.
Okay. I don't know if, if the company you're working with could maybe estimate that with the, when they come back for future approval, I'd just like to hear if they can do that. Architectural had some question, um, where was that? Which was one of my questions too, that there's gonna be, if proposing landscape mounting and screening up front along Valley View Road. And maybe we're not getting into that detail now, but do you have an idea how, how tall, how big that would be with, is the building be able to see, be seen from the street considering it's what, forty-five feet tall?
Um, I do have uh some. I did, I did look at that, so.
I looked around, I didn't see.
The north, the north corner of the building and the south corner of the building um average from Mimosa Drive, the residential boulevard going into the development there. That average distance from there is seven hundred feet. The elevation at that drive is ten fifty-eight. I just got the finished floor elevation of this building Friday to be at ten twenty-seven, so it is lower. Finished grade is even lower than that, it's four feet on that east wall because of the dock wall. Those walls at forty-six feet high bring the top of the wall at ten sixty-nine, so you have top wall ten sixty-nine and you have this boulevard at ten fifty-eight, at seven hundred feet apart. So if, if your eyes are at that level, you are one degree, you're looking up one degree to hit the top of the wall.
Oh, so it's, it's almost like it's down in a hole.
It's down in a hole, yeah.
It is, yeah.
Okay. I just, I see mounting and screening, I just was thinking, oh, well, you know, is that a one-foot mound or is it a twenty-foot mound, but you described it that way.
Well, so as, as that terrain drops in that seven hundred feet.
You won't see it as much.
Somewhere in the middle, then you have trees. And those trees, you know, if it's forty-six and halfway, let's say it's twenty feet, um, and you have a mound and, and a twenty-foot tree, you're, you're blocking the view.
Yeah.
Seven hundred feet is you know, four, two, two football fields. And it's, it's pretty distant from Valley View Road.
Just asking more for the record because I know the existing business there threw some arbor of idy out there about five or six years ago. Half of them die, the rest don't grow because they don't get watered and they don't really do a darn thing there, right?
Haven't driven down Valley View Road with um the thought of looking at the trees uh recently. So my point of reference is Google Earth, probably just like you guys.
That's what I'm looking at right now.
So yeah, and there are some trees there and, you know, in the winter without some of the leaves, a lot of those are evergreens too, so.
The city has a really nice tall mound of grass in front of the uh service building there. Be really nice if there were a bunch of trees on it, but, but, yeah, so I just wanted to get more information on that.
Yeah, and there's, there's still, you know, it says uh and per com, it says to shield from adjacent residential.
Yeah.
Um, but keep in mind, the adjacent property is a rail property. And that's probably a hundred feet in width or fifty feet in width to add, to add to that, so. I just started looking at this study, but I will give a site section um through the building up the valley. I'll show the trees, I'll show the house, I'll show the building. So I'll see your line of sight, and I know that she's concerned about screening of, of rooftop units and Nina already gave me a heads up on this. I know she's concerned about that and, and we'll, you know, we'll take a look at it. You know, but she's also concerned about the mass of the building being forty-six, and there's also screening with architectural elements, which means me raising the walls of a forty-six foot wall. So hey, hey, gotta pick your poison here. And I know there's other ways to screen units, but I think uh at the distance of, of the average of two football fields, I, I would probably propose if I could just paint them Ohio gray skies color and disappear.
You, you mean, you're gonna show some line of sight perspective?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that would be ideal.
Yeah, and I'll show it. Actually, I, I just got the topos from Matt who got them from the survey, so I, I just didn't get a chance to to, you know, really dig into it, but I have to, next Friday.
Realistically, these people are gonna be the ones that are gonna be more affected by it than anybody because these people pulling out are almost blocked by this, they're gonna see that building a little bit, but these people are gonna be more, and I know there's trees right there and then it also drops down, so I think, I mean, if anybody's gonna see it more would be probably these folks and really nobody over, I mean, if they're way upstairs and like in an upper floor, they're, they'll probably, they're definitely gonna see the building as well.
I sure hope that those people would be happy to see.
Yeah.
Oh, I would agree. I've gotta imagine this is gonna be.
It comes out of there too, it's pretty soon.
I don't think so, it's gotta be, just gotta delivered and then.
Well, I don't think the dust alone would be.
I was gonna say, it's good.
In the summer, they're running water hoses on Mimosa to keep the dust from the trucks going and out down, so.
We're gonna save it.
Yeah, that'll be good. Thank you, that's all I have.
Yeah.
Let everybody back to. I just wanted to bring up a point that is going to come up in the future. I understand the electrical to this quays is a juggernaut, and a lot of this gear is coming from Germany.
Yes, sir.
And a lot of that gear is going to meet the European standard. However, I don't believe that that has U.S. listing that's required here in the United States. So I called the Board of European Standards, and just for your information, is they have a list of agencies that would certify that, so you could use that in the United States.
Yeah, so when this equipment comes in, it's, it's coming in on box trucks and crates and assembled, and the one line is like 500 feet long. That bay inside the building is 82 feet wide, clear span.
I would have no idea what I'm looking at.
So, so, yeah, to get, to get these commissioned, I think that's still part of the process, is to get certified for.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I think Bruckner, which is the company that's building this, this stuff, when they're building it, I, I think they understand it's coming to America, so, so their standards are probably met in their production. But I'm probably not the person to say one idea there, so I just put lines on paper.
That would have to be dangerous. Okay, well, if nobody else has any thoughts, I think.
I'm good.
I think, I'll just make this comment, I think the building looks nice. I think it'll be just, I think just the section will tell a more story, but I think otherwise.
I do have a question. After today's meeting, we'd like to get on site, and we have arrangements with the current owner, since it's, it's really not changed hands yet to clear trees. Is that, is that the standard commercial application, and I mark other and put tree clearing?
Yeah.
Is that the only sheet that I need? Okay. I just, I gotta get that to Kevin, so that he can get off my back. That's all.
I think we're looking at preliminary plan for, so does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we preliminary approve the new Peak Nano Building for Geis Companies with the following conditions, or just, what's that? Oh, yeah, that's what I was going to say, with all the conditions being met by the reviewers, meaning Mr. Franz, Mr. Gelati, and Ms. Schultz being addressed before final approval is given, or when they come back for final approval.
Second.
I'll second that.
All right, any more discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good project.
Thank you.
Almost. All right, building addition for Blackburn on Freeway Drive. Stay warm. Challenge accepted.
Well, why don't you start out, or I guess, get your news for Susan.
Sure, Greg Seifert, representing MBL Architects this evening, Jimmy Blackburn, the owner of the property.
All right, let's just give us a quick, quick overview.
Sure. Yeah, this is a fairly straightforward expansion to the existing building. It's a 20,000 square foot expansion off of the north side of the building. There is existing drives coming down into the, the front of this building. The building will be set back from the existing front of the existing building, I should say. And we've read all of the staff comments and have no issues with them. We will submit for planning variance per those comments and get that in before the deadline on Friday. We don't have any issues with any of the other comments and look forward to putting those together. And we were going to be using Matt Weber as an engineer, but based upon the last, we may switch to someone else. I'm kidding. But, yeah, we're, we're just at getting this similar to the, the Geis project that was just here. Also, just getting the survey information to the civil engineer to get all of those details worked out that'll need to be done before we submit here for final approval. And we're here to just answer any questions you might have, and hopefully you find favor with this and move us along, and we can get this expansion built.
Okay. Mr. Franz, if you'd like to go over your comments.
Sure, yeah, so my report dated March 2nd, and effectively he just outlined my comments. It sounds like you don't have any concern with what I'd suggest. Obviously, we need the plan to scale for, seemed like an Energizer Bunny when I keep making that comment. But, yeah, it's jobbed drawing the scale, and then the parking issue, as you indicated, need to go for a variance for that. And then I just suggest you have some landscaping for the, for the, for the site. Get a screen in the parking areas, even though you have existing, just really need to have some landscaping. So suggested that, and then we'll come back to architecture, photometrics plan. Just felt the pole should be shielded differently, or something lowered to reduce the foot handle strength down to half foot or less. Seems like a fairly easy thing to do. Dumpster needs to be screened, I need to provide the methods to screen it. Again, concept location for stormwater management, city engineer's going to ask for more details. And then Sheet A 101, and that's the, just to clear up, Sheet A 101 states that seven new spaces are being added to the site, but they're not graphically depicted. Appears that the parking lot along the north property line titled Parking Space is five, and the two adjacent, the two adjacent to the north of the existing building entitled Parking Spaces Two is meant to service the seven, just clarification.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get that cleaned up.
Yeah.
So it'll be part of our variance approval, or submission, so.
Yeah, so all the comments are really, you know, they're, nothing significant that would hold the project up. Need to go get the variance, so provided you get that, get to come back with a scaled plan for final plan approval, and would recommend approval to the commission subject to those items.
Okay, good.
Joy? Okay, thank you. Chairman, Brian already touched on stormwater management, so you show a spot in the back for a retention pond, so that's great. So when you get to that point in the process, obviously you'll submit here detailed calculations for that, we'll review those. Similar to Mr. Koblenz, who was here earlier, we would need a wetland delineation of the site. I think you're clean, but I can't tell you that for sure, so make sure you get that, please, and submit it to us here. Please do that. And then last, I would suggest that you show the truck maneuver, turn analysis on the plan here, just so we make sure that this all works the way you think it will, so. Sure you've already looked at that, but we should see it graphically on, on the plan. Typically, for this type of thing, we do get that diagram, so.
We'll do.
That's all I have, Chairman.
All right, thank you. Mr. Seif.
So the original existing building is sprinkling alarm, and the sides would also require sprinkler for their storage? And depending on the separation office, whether it's a separate fire area, you might also require sprinkler, I know what intention is.
Yeah, the entire 20,000 square feet will be sprinkled.
All right, sprinkling alarm, so that's our fire department comment.
Nina? Then you guys obviously saw the architectural comments, so you don't have any problems with that?
Well, you know, it's, we'll, we'll put something together and see if we can't make that, you know, meet the requirements of the ordinances.
Okay.
You know, when you go out there and physically look, you can't see the building even from the highway, but even when you're on Freeway Drive, there's probably about a 10-foot grade change between the road and where the front of this addition is going to be. It's going to be, if I put screening for the parking lot, we won't even see this addition, so maybe I can do it that way. But, you know, we'll, we'll work with the materials that we have and see if we can't meet the ordinance intent and get a sign off from your architectural consultant.
Just a thought, just kind of looking at, I guess my one recommendation would be there, maybe just even just the front of the building, try to get that to match.
The front of the addition.
The front of the addition, have that match the, the existing front of the building and the side. I mean, I, I agree with that, I mean, as you go further down, you're, you're not really going to see it. And the back of it fronts the railroad, so I think just from like the front standpoint, maybe just figure out a way to do that rapid around the corners a little bit, and I think that would be sufficient enough to kind of meet the intent of the code, and also from a visual perspective, so it doesn't just look like a, an addition.
Yep, okay, we will take that all into consideration, and we don't want to come back here and have to arm wrestle with anybody. So we'll, we'll figure out, we'll figure out a solution.
Thanks.
Tell me anything?
I'm Chris.
You guys want to argue about it?
No, not at all.
Okay, gave your chance.
When you started the meeting and said we're going to move the agenda, I was like, yes.
That's so lucky, yeah, you're still at the end.
There's still one out there.
Yeah, I think, I think it's just similar to the last time.
Conditional approval.
Preliminary.
I'll recommend that we make preliminary plan approval for the new addition to Blackburn OEM Wheels with the conditions of Mr. Franz's memo being addressed and Matt, the variances that are going to be required for the site are taken forward, zoning board, Mr. Gelati's comments, and then just looking at the architecture from Ms. Schultz's comments as well.
And I'll second that, any other comments on that? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you.
Pretty quick.
How'd we do?
That was pretty good. Not bad for not being assigned.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We look forward to coming back and seeing success.
They really did make it fast, didn't they?
Yeah.
And then there was one. I'm starting to get angry.
It comes out of your stipend, just so you know.
We need an intermission or halftime or something, right? Popcorn machine in the hallway, maybe? What's that?
Throw peanuts on the floor.
Let's leave it here for city council. They meet Thursday. Let's see who this is.
Oh, wow.
Welcome.
All right, just, just for the record, can we get names for Susan?
Christopher Kobe.
Sean Thompson, TNA Architects.
Alex Kelly, TNA Architects.
All right. Want to give us an update?
Yeah, so we, after last time we were here, we did get through a couple of variances. I saw that those were recognized in the, in the review comments. So that's good, we tried to address the other one specifically, addressing the architecture of the building, trying to get away from the pre-engineered metal building look. We have also updated the landscaping plan, although it looks like there was still some, some comments about the landscaping. Did try to, to, you know, take another stab at that. In terms of site stuff, still working on the detention basin and working that out with, in conjunction with the wetlands piece of that. So we know we'll have to be back for a final version of that, we're just not done with that piece yet. But the, the main gist of trying to get in was to, to see if we had made enough progress on the architecture appearance of the building, and to where we could try to accelerate our process and up the draft.
Okay, all right, Mr. Franz, you want to go over your comments?
Sure, my report dated March 1st. For the sake of the temperature in the room at the time, I won't read the first page. But basically, the, the purpose of the first page is to clearly identify, and you guys are aware, we talked about it last time, the retail piece of this, when that comes to fruition, for whoever the tenant may be, they need to come back and get a conditional zoning certificate for that pursuant to the code. We're not authorizing that this, this evening, or any subsequent rules, need to submit a separate application. Judging by a lot of heads nodding for the affirmative mention to the record, you all acknowledge that's the case.
Yes.
Thank you. So then, final development plan approval. As stated, there was an action of the board zoning appeals, so a variance was granted for those reduced yard setbacks, so just my action item notes that. The parking still just needs to be correctly identified, the required off-street parking standard, so you can take my little thing and copy it in a table, that's fine. If you have editorial rights to it.
Yeah, okay.
But just so it correctly identifies it. And Section 1171, 11E2, with regard, with regard to the parking in the side yard, no issue, it has to be screened. I just, I just felt that the board's view isn't what we'd want to see for screening. We can, we have a landscape architect on the commission here, maybe tells me I'm crazy, but I just suggested something maybe a little more dense, and maybe like a Western red cedar or something to help screen it a little better.
Right, well, I think they, oh, yeah, yeah, that or.
These?
Around the, around the AC unit.
So this comment specifically talks about the parking in the side yard?
Sorry.
So, let's see.
That was this, and they, so the landscaper that we were working back, came back with a, I can't read this up. It's arbor vida?
Yep.
Yeah.
What, what kind?
I cannot read this upside down. I don't have the common name for it.
Tahuja.
Tahuja. Oh. Yeah.
Do ya, is there a?
Arbor vida?
Yeah, I know, I'm kind of picky about, there's, there's the occidentalis, which deer like to eat, and then there's placata, so if you just write placata, and then make sure that they just pick something that's sized appropriately.
This one is tahuja occidentalis, so don't use that one.
Right, uh, doya placata would be much better.
I was going to say the same thing.
Is that English?
I, I knew you were going there, I could see it.
Bonus points if you spelled it right.
You're like the Latin.
I can't read it.
I was just wondering, is that English?
Go ahead. Yeah, then variances granted on the aprons, then we get to comment five about the outdoor storage. Sheet Alice one provides no landscape screening in these areas, so you need to screen your outdoor storage.
So all down this side, I guess it's, it's dense?
That's all woods, according to last time we met, we were not, you guys weren't concerned, because this is all woods on the west side of the property, and then on the east side of the property, it's all the trees, the big deciduous maples that are down on the property, the area between myself and the adjacent property there. So that was discussed at the one of the first meetings. This is all woods, like this is literally.
Your western side, you're saying.
The western side and the eastern side both.
You own those woods?
No, 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 no.
Oh, okay, yeah, so you need to screen your property from view.
Screen it from what, though?
Those, you have, there's no guarantee those woods are going to remain there.
Well, those are wetlands, that's all wetlands, they, those will remain. That's not, you cannot build on that property, we talked about that.
Yeah, I don't, well, I wasn't here, I had to leave at the very end, so I wasn't part of that conversation. But you, what you're saying is, the back of that property where I'm talking about to be screened, which is your outdoor area that I just circled.
Correct.
That's all wetland on someone else's property.
Correct.
And you have documentation of that wetland on that property to show that it's never going to be.
Yeah, it should be in, in the delineation report.
On the, on that one?
It should be shown on it, at least.
It should probably be indicated that there is likely wetland, but I don't know if they crossed them. I can't say with certainty that they crossed the property line.
Scientists would not delineate wetlands...
Off the property.
Off of the property, on someone else's property. That's not usually the case at all.
So, they might have put that there was likely, just the way that this slopes and drains down there, they might have said that it was likely wetlands, but they, I know they didn't certify it as such.
And even if it was wetlands, it could be developed in the future, like Mr. Coblen's is doing. He was here...
It might be detention, actually. I think the, when they developed it, I feel like it, it is kind of excavated out.
Oh, that's right, the detention pond is there.
There is a pond.
There is a detention pond there. So there is no way to build, there is no way to build on that strip. And then on the eastern side, that's all deciduous and evergreens in between my property and the property on the eastern property.
Going that way.
See it? All the way between myself and, I'm not sure, usually our AC.
The trees are on your property, though?
The trees are on my property, yes.
I apologize, I wasn't here at the end of that meeting. Was it determined by this commission that you didn't have to screen that area?
When was the meeting? December, January? I don't think I was here for that one. Okay.
I'm having trouble remembering a little detail, that detail. It, it sounds like something we probably would have, well, that sounds reasonable, there's already would, but also not thinking of what your, your thinking behind it, not having that. But we may have thought that that seemed reasonable.
Don't they go through PAM anyway?
Not for the landscaping, the landscaping.
As, the reason, I mean, so typically, the commission historically has always required screening, has not allowed trees on other property to be used for screening on the property in question for development. The most recent example would be the hotel. They tried using someone else's trees as their screening and the commission said, no, you have to screen on your property. So, while I understand that that's an area that, as the example I just gave, is more visible from the road, the code does state you have to screen outdoor storage areas.
Can't control the screening on somebody else's property. Basis behind it, right?
Yeah, I guess if, if, if it came up, if it was discussed, I mean, they probably, whoever was here at that moment, maybe didn't realize the, the item that Mr. Francis is talking about. But I guess if the code's requires you to screen it and, you know, screening occurs on your own property, you probably wouldn't need to do that.
Is this visible from the road at all?
No. No.
Yeah, well, I, I, I don't know. Didn't this come up before? I don't know. I would require such a thing, from what they're saying. They'd have to jam trees in front of trees, I guess. And, but whatever.
That was the same thing that they used on the east side, is you'd be trying to jam trees in front of existing trees on this, on this property line as well. Because if you look at a overhead on Google, same situation, you'd try to jam trees on top of trees here.
There are, are trees that are yours on that side?
On the east side, yeah.
Yeah, six foot of them. They've got trees all along there. There are six, they're, yeah, that's a six foot on their property. At least six foot of them is what they own the other side.
Right.
So there's, there is screening on that one side. And there's some in the back.
This is all woods again back here, too.
And those trees on the eastern property line to which six feet is yours and remainder goes into Twinsburg Township. You're providing parking up to a distance of six feet to your property line. Where are your grading limits in that area?
It's...
Grade just to the edge of that parking lot?
Yeah, there's gonna be a little bit of roll from the edge of the, from the property line to the parking.
So you're gonna grade beyond the limits of the parking?
Yes, yeah, a little bit, yeah.
Into the six feet?
Yes.
You're using as your landscape upper?
Yes.
How far?
I don't know, maybe half of that, three feet.
And how are we able to ensure that those trees and that vegetation survives?
We're, it's actually, I think, in that location on the east side, I think we're actually slightly building up versus cutting down into those tree roots. And it's, it's a, we only have to go a little bit just to that, that edge of, if I, if I remember the grading plan correctly, that it's not a nice smooth slope, which was what we're trying to get. So we're trying to absorb at most like a foot of difference between our, the edge of our parking and the property line.
So you're gonna fill on top of the roots?
So we, there's a couple, yeah, correct. We're not cutting down and we're...
That could actually be, I hate to say it, that could actually be worse. Suffocates the roots. Roots need to be actually close to the surface.
I haven't walked the edge of that property to see, I mean, the, the tree roots could be on his property. I mean, some of them are decent sized trees and they're planted pretty close to the, to the property line.
Grading plan would help there.
It's being worked on.
Who owns the property then? Do you guys own all the way back to, well, that's, that's the railroad spur, or railroads? Or you own just to almost like where that other, just the tree line? So who owns that tree line? Who owns that property back there, then?
The neighboring, the neighbor to the west.
Okay.
Skag Industries is the exact owner of that.
Gotcha, okay.
That's a big warehouse.
I just wasn't sure, like, what?
That's what I'm saying, with that warehouse there, you can't even see, that's with that gigantic warehouse, there's no way even to get visibility from our builds, or even our building at that point, coming off the west.
I mean, is that required? This seems fairly reasonable, protected.
I guess that's, that's, was kind of our approach, is that looking at this and the sightlines from Highland Road, that by the time you get to the, you know, we intentionally put the outdoor storage in the back, what would be less visible, that, well...
I mean, could we, could we approve it that if they, that, I mean, there's trees there right now, I don't disagree, it's not visible. But if those trees were to ever come down, then it would be your responsibility to then screen the outdoor store. Is that something we can? I know, it becomes a enforcement issue at that point. I, I know.
Unless they're gonna put up a financial guarantee, I don't know how you enforce it. Unless they want to agree to have their permit revoked, I don't think you're gonna wanna do that. Or with, with no...
We're gonna get into the legal battle.
Yeah. Yeah.
They seem reasonably protected.
I mean, if the concern is not seeing the outdoor storage from another warehouse, I, I, you know, we, we took it to, we're trying to make sure that the average public driving down the road can't see it. That was our, that was our mindset.
Maybe they could delineate a tree protection zone as part of their landscape plan.
We could do that?
Yeah, I think that would provide some assurance. It was gonna stay.
I don't understand what does that mean?
Yeah, I was just there.
You provide a, kind of a line showing where some construction fencing will go in the detail and then...
You can do that on both sides.
And you provide it in those critical, around the critical root zones of those existing trees and then that'll, that becomes part of the construction documents. Then the contractor has to install that and then during construction, they can't grade or, and rate, you know, in a good spec, you know.
Black sill fence, you know the black sill fence normally see? I guess is the easiest way to say, that sill fence that's two or three foot high, that they roll out and they stake every fifteen feet or twenty feet to protect tree roots or whatever you wanna protect in that area. It's the easiest way to think of that, so on a visual.
I guess on the east side, you've got trees of your own to protect. I guess there's nothing necessarily on your property. I guess that's the, you know, to Mr. Francis's point, even if you do that on the west side, there's nothing on your property to protect.
Okay, if I'm looking this way, there's ten feet from here to your property line, right? And is, are there trees there now?
No. There might be a little bit of scrub, but any tree that's worth saving is on that side.
There is some in the back corner, right here. Right about here, but then from there forward, I think is what the, doesn't appear to be anything.
I guess to what extent would we be looking for, for screening? How, how dense, how in an area like that?
I mean, you have a limited amount of space to work with, right? And one side, the east side, you only have six feet of grading, you're filling in some of that area. You have more on the west side, you have ten feet to the property line, it looks like.
Correct.
And I understand, it's tucked back there, I, I get that. It may not always be tucked back there, but it is for the time being.
The biggest thing to take in consideration as well of that is anything that we plant, I mean, unless you want us to put thirty, forty foot trees in there, is gonna be lower than the existing level of all the trees. So it's, I'm not trying to sound silly or smart ass, but at the end of the day, it's, unless we put thirty or forty foot mature crazy trees in there, you're never gonna see it past, can you guys see a visual overhead of that or no? Like, are you looking at Google so you can see it? Like, that stuff's all...
But I think they would want something lower and more dense anyway, we're trying to...
You would, you would be wasting any time and effort because all this stuff would be...
Right. But I think what he's saying is you own those, so if someone would come in and wipe off the wet, wetland, then your trees are now there.
Okay, I got you, I see what you're saying.
It seems reasonably protected.
It, it does, but I guess it doesn't...
Yeah, I mean, if we don't have any wiggle, we don't have any wiggle.
Yeah, so this is, this is in the code, this is a requirement to screen outdoor storage on your own property. Is that what you're saying?
Well, it's always on your own property.
Yes, but, but that is all in, in there. So, I mean, short of a variance, is that even a...
Make it do, maybe you could do some fencing too, if you wanted to maybe just do some fencing, since that area isn't very wide, you could do some fencing to screen.
How tall is these?
It's gonna be a block ball already.
Yeah, it's gonna be the bin blocks. Those are gonna be ten foot tall.
Yeah.
So you're gonna have three, you're gonna have three blocks high, which are three, six, nine, so the top of the block with concrete or with the pavement or anything else back there is gonna be nine, gonna be nine foot tall right there.
Looks like they got a wall already.
Right.
Cause you're storing what, like gravel and things in it?
Yeah, exactly, one hundred percent, yes.
I mean, if you wanted to split here, you could...
They can approve less screening through unique and sensitive design of the building in sight. Imaginative facade design?
That's what we do.
Block, the block, three foot block section stacked high to nine feet doesn't sound super imaginative, but...
No, not imaginative.
But that's... I'm just reading from the code, what it says, you know?
I don't know what that is there. What is, what is, what is that?
That's screenings for the dumpster.
Yeah, but is it a tree, bush? Like, I'm trying to understand this.
So these were more of the, these were more of the arbor vida, we're trying to create a screen wall.
So that's your gap in between these...
The block and sill.
Block walls and...
We have a building, landscape, and then the, the bin blocks in the back.
So what were you reading there again, Mr. Francis? Were, were you able to do, be sensitive about what?
Imaginative facade design, abundant, all abundant landscaping, extensive bermeen, and this, this is regard to your screening your outdoor storage area.
Does nine foot concrete block walls count?
Yeah. I mean, if, I, you know, again, I understand the dilemma, it's tucked back there. I feel like the stuff to the west is more likely to get exposed at some point in the future, because that property owner to the west, when they go to do any sort of building on the property, it's gonna be closer to this west property line.
You're talking about this here?
Well, I, you know, although...
You got that big retention pond there.
I'm not sure that you can, because their retention pond was...
You can't cut a driveway in on the east side of that pond and...
Well, except that I, I think if they do actually get into it, they will find that there's wetlands that focus down. This, this drains this way. But, again, that's a supposition.
Doesn't make the parcel developable.
Right, doesn't make it unsolvable or undoing, but I, I... Well, that's not a separate parcel, that's part of the other parcel. Correct. Okay. I said we're gonna think it was a separate... No, but his question was, could they come around and, and build something here and clear this? And I mean, I, I guess, but...
Or could you cut a driveway to the back part of the property and now the driveway is exposed, you know, they're taking all the trees down that are along the driveway, going back to the big chunk, and now it's exposed?
Possibly, except that they've already got an access easement through his property to access this back, because you can't actually get to this part of, from the, from their part. Correct, correct. So...
I, I feel like we all, sitting up here, kind of, kind of agree that what, what's there is kind of reasonable, but it's also something in the code that we kind of feel like we can't really get out of. Is that...
Well, can they do some, are you able to do anything with that? You got those stacked three by three or whatever stack thing. Can you do anything on that facade of that?
I mean, would you guys accept like a, I mean...
Paint a mirror?
I was thinking, oh, you know, maybe some kind of a veneer design, you know, so I don't know, can they split face the back of them, so it's just not solid concrete?
What's the Mega Millions right now?
Yeah, I don't know, I don't have a sense of those things, so it might be cheaper to just...
But let me ask you this, since we have ten foot there, what, what if we did like, what if we backfilled with some fill on that? And then if you wanted to, that would just look like a hillside, and then above that, we just did a simpler thing that we wouldn't have to worry about resistances, drought, water, deer, anything else, and just did like six, those six foot tall grasses that actually provide winter aspect or winter interest as well.
I was just gonna actually suggest that, I was gonna ask.
But I mean, with that, instead of, instead of you just seeing a block wall, what if we filled behind it, you know, as much as we could, to provide, obviously, you know, you don't wanna go straight off the wall, but within that ten foot, you backfill behind them, three, four foot high, and we did winter, and winter interested perennial grasses on the backside of the wall. Is that something?
So that would probably work on the west side.
Correct, yeah, on the east side, we don't really have that kind of work. On the east side, there's nothing we can do there. I mean, the trees are there. The best I think we could do on the east side would be to try to just put a couple of ornamental shrubs down there to break up the appearance of the big block bin wall. But again, the only one seeing that side is if you're in that building's parking lot next door, even coming from the east direction, because the way that other building, that old Arsenia building is built, it's in front of us, so you won't even see that east approach on that, on that back lot as well.
I guess, since you're just getting the grading, is there any way to try to do the grading to minimize the chance that you're gonna, you know, impact the, the...
East.
The east side of it, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's been our goal. Obviously, we can't, we can't go on the neighbor's property and grade their property either, so everything we do has to...
They may not like that.
Can I ask this question? Could we, could you guys, I'm just trying to think of a way to like, guess help find some additional footprint there on the east side. Could you take, does your driveway need to be that thirty feet? And could you truncate that down, closing just up a little bit off of that property, off of, like, give you a little bit more than your six foot there to...
We could look at that, and we did come back, we, we did a pretty extensive truck turning analysis back here, and that's what I mean, ended up baskets of the variances we did. But we could maybe see if we can squeeze a, a little bit more out of it on the east side.
I mean, I'm fine with the solution of taking and bounding up a little bit on the back sides of those and then...
Are these blocks that you're having cast for this, or these blocks that you have? No, they're, they're basically, if everyone knows what they are, they're the two foot by four foot by six foot, four, four foot, yeah, the stackable with the interlock that you, that you stack on top. They do make them in a split face, not a split face, but a... They do make them in a split face, not a split face, but a cultured. But I mean, realistically, it triples the cost of the block. I mean, I'm not, they're $100 apiece, and they go to $300 apiece when you go and ask them to do that initial, I guess they call it a stamped face is what they would call it. It's just, yeah, it's just, it's...
I think maybe doing what you suggested, Scott's agree, yeah. Try to tread them out, or try to slope it off and put, maybe it's some taller grasses that are kind of, you know, back up in case they ever come through here. On the east side, I would say, I mean, if you've actually, if these are yours and you've got it covered on this side, you know, maybe it's the fencing to try and protect it during construction, but if there's any, you know, if you can... I know you can't guarantee that they're not going to get into that, but if there's things you can do to minimize it, can you lose a couple of feet in the...
Take a little bit of your 10 feet, steal like a footer, foot and a half from there, and pull that whole thing up and give yourself another foot and a half on that, on that six-foot side, and then that maybe helps.
We can look.
No.
He's starting by taking the whole thing shifted.
Just take all this and shift it a foot or two that way.
Other than we, we got the variance through that, so... But really, kind of what's driving it is we have the scale, and people, they come in, weigh, get loaded up, and come back out. But trying to maintain also a safe distance here, that's where our pinch point.
What is your pinch point there? What is that, that distance?
I think it's like 27 feet. So it maybe could cut down a little bit. Decent-sized trucks coming through there, so we...
Could you push your scale on that? That won't work.
Because it would be smashing that wall.
I know, I just was trying to just find you somewhere to...
Right, find a piece of the puzzle together. Just a very tight. But we're going to come back. I mean, we'll work out the grading and come back with something.
Why don't you work out the grading, see if you can have less impact over on this side. Do what we talked about...